Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand as our student board member leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to make note of the passing of Ms. Kathy Foder, who had been a 25-year employee of our food service program, serving the past 19 years at the Brookside Elementary School. Ms. Foder made a daily impact with the students and staff at Brookside, and she will be dearly missed. In addition to her service, she is also the parent of two children who attended Monroe Township schools. At this time, please join me for a moment of silence in memory of Kathy.
Mrs. Arminio.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mrs. D'Mayo.
Here.
Mrs. Kalpanowicz.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Pelori.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mrs. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Tofano.
Here.
And Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening?
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted March 14, 2019, at all schools, the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. Before we move on to the agenda, I just would like to spend a few minutes talking about the defeated referendum from last Tuesday, and I'm sure Mr. Goodall will have something to say later on in his report. I think that we're very aware that the community does not support the new middle school, nor adding in addition onto the high school. And there's been a lot of people that I've talked to in the last few days, and a lot of information that came through other people, and questions about why, or comments about why they did not support the referendum. And a lot of what I'm going to say has already been discussed on our referendum Facebook page, but I think it's important to know, to, you know, say this again. Some of the reasons were that the schools will be overcrowded when built, but there is a big difference between the functional capacity of a school and the operating capacity of a school, and we would not have opened our capacity. Impact fees for developers, while we all wish we had impact fees, impact fees have been illegal in New Jersey since 1957, and only the legislators can change that, and we have a committee that will be mentioning more on that later. More than one family living in homes in Monroe, we also have some information on that later. We don't support a referendum in March. Why didn't we have it in May or June? And the answer to that is the state will only give you six days during the year when you can go out for a referendum. The fourth Tuesday of January, the second Tuesday of March, the third Tuesday of April, the last Tuesday of September, the first Tuesday in November, or the second Tuesday in December. Again, that's a state mandate. Jamesburg students coming to our high school. It is not the Jamesburg students that are causing the overcrowding in the high school, and they also pay tuition to go to our high school, so that is not an issue. It costs too much money for the board to use a PR firm. The board did not use a PR firm for this referendum. Property taxes are too high, and we understand that. Nobody wants to raise property taxes. But until the state comes up with a new way of funding schools, we are forced to use property taxes to do this. So you have to contact, or everybody needs to contact their legislators and let them know that we need a new funding for schools. The board didn't advocate for fair funding. We have done many things to advocate for fair funding, and I think, Mr. Degorsky, you had two pages worth of information on the ways we did that. We need to advocate for a new formula, and we need to, you know, do things to contact the state and let them know how unhappy we are. At the beginning of this year, we created a new educational advocacy committee, and that committee will be looking into suing the state and going for a new funding formula. With a township of over 44,000 residents, think how Trenton would react if every one of our residents emailed our legislators every day with this request. We are not suing the state. The educational advocacy committee will also be looking into suing the state. We need to remove ourselves from the Abbott decision. Unfortunately, this is state Supreme Court ordered by the state of New Jersey. They are the only ones that can change that, and until they do that, the money from our taxes will go, continue to go to the Abbott districts. The state will come in and build a school for us, so I don't need to vote for it. Although it is possible that the state could come in and mandate the board to build a school, they will never, ever pay for a school in Monroe Township. And the last thing is all the building going on in Monroe. This was probably the biggest reason for not supporting the referendum. Unfortunately, the Board of Education does not get involved with the planning of the community. We are different governmental agencies, following different regulations, policies, mandates. Our responsibility, the Board of Education's responsibility is to educate every child coming into the school district. And in the end, it is our responsibility to find a place to put all of our unhoused students that currently is over 1,500 and will continue to grow. So until we come up with something permanent, we will continue to have to add trailers to our district. So where do we go from here? At this time, the board does not have another plan. We went through Plan A last year, we went through Plan B this year. So we must now reassess and develop next steps to introduce another bond referendum into the future, so we have permanent places for our children. We have heard that the community members felt that they did not have an opportunity to provide input into the planning of how best to meet the needs of the growing student population in the school district. Although the board received input from the public through many ad hoc committee meetings, through board meetings, and a survey sent throughout the community last year that over 800 people responded to, we will now once again reach out to our residents for additional input through a formal written process designed to engage the entire community on the parameters of any future referendum. The steering committee will be disbanded, and an ad hoc committee will be created and will consist of representatives from throughout Monroe community. Parents, seniors, yes verities, no verities, those who did not vote, district personnel, and board members. Anyone who is interested in serving on this ad hoc committee should submit a letter of interest to the board office to my attention, and should include your name, address, telephone number, and an email address. And I am asking that all letters of interest to serve on this ad hoc committee be submitted by Friday, April 19. Once the ad hoc committee is formed, we will be asking all Monroe residents to provide their ideas, their suggestions for consideration on how the Board of Education should proceed with a new referendum to meet the needs of our current and growing student population. The information collected will be turned over to this new ad hoc committee, who will consider all the written submissions from the community, and there will be answers to every one of the questions that people ask. Every suggestion that meets the criteria will be reviewed and discussed by the ad hoc committee for its educational feasibility, ability, excuse me, educational feasibility, ability to adequately provide for our current and growing enrollment, and cost considerations. Following such review and discussion, the Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee will report the outcome of this review to the full board and the public at a future Board of Education meeting. An announcement regarding the timeline for submission of suggestions to be considered by the ad hoc committee will be made once the ad hoc committee has been formed, which will be probably towards the end of April into May, as we don't want it to interfere with the superintendent's search. So anybody who has any questions about that process can contact myself or the board office. So at this time, we'll go to the agenda and the approval of the minutes for the special Public Board of Education meeting of February 4, 2019. Moved by Mr. Ryback. Second by Mr. D'Mayo. Any additions or corrections? Ms. Arminio?
This is the Special Board of Education meeting, February 4. I just want to make sure where we had school boards in.
Yes.
Okay, I reviewed the written minutes, and in the written minutes, there's no indication of the discussions that any of the board members had with school boards or any of the questions. So I don't believe this is a sufficiently comprehensive review of that meeting. For instance, there was an advertising question. Let me go through the whole thing. I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
Did you want to comment?
No.
Now? Okay. We had a school board, we had school board training recommendations that are not in here. We spoke of a valid process, we spoke of different things that the school board suggested for our superintendent's search that's not in here. I asked a question within the hour 1:15:44. Mr. Pelori asked a question 1:14:40. Mr. Tofano asked a question 1:13:58. And Mrs. Lang asked a question on 1:04:16, and again, I think at 1:11:41. So none of these were included in here. This is supposed to be a comprehensive representation for, if this is going to be an official document, and we're going to sign it, vote on it, then in a year from now, when the public wants to review this, it should have these kinds, this kind of information in here. So I would recommend that my colleagues not vote for it until some of these things are put in, because this is what people rely on if they want to challenge the board or get information from what the board's activity has been at meetings. That's the point of a public open meeting and comprehensive minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Degorsky?
Yes. Respectfully, Mrs. Arminio and I seem to have a disagreement on what is reasonably comprehensive for the minutes. I believe it is satisfactory as presented. The minutes are not supposed to have everybody's question and answer delineated in there. It's not supposed to be a transcript or a court reporting of the meeting. It's supposed to give the user of the minutes a reasonable picture of what occurred there and the action taken and the votes. I believe that it accomplishes that, and, you know, if there was a suggestion to modify it in any way, again, I would respectfully ask that the comments come before the board meeting where they're being approved, so that we could consider it. Right now, there's nothing we can do other than just keep kicking the minutes down the road.
No, we can certainly change it, and we can add to it before it's voted on. And I respectfully disagree with the fact that you think it's reasonably comprehensive. It's not comprehensive at all. It doesn't even make a suggestion that board members ask questions at a training seminar. So it, and I do believe that we were challenged years ago as a board in the courts about comprehensive closed minutes, and the Board of Education in Monroe lost. So I think that we might want to revisit our definition of reasonably comprehensive minutes. It's not what we remember, it's for the sake of the public to understand what actually went on at that meeting.
Madam?
Yes.
I completely hear what you're saying. The minutes previously, per your objection, were reviewed by school boards and the board attorney, both of who agree that they are meeting the state's standard for minute-keeping. The minutes are consistent with the way other school districts keep minutes, and there is a liability that the district would take by putting in a complete transcript of every comment and question and answer that occurs during deliberation. That's not the purpose of minutes.
I am not asking for a complete transcript or verbatim. I am asking for a comprehensive indication of what occurred at the meeting. And I won't, if the whole board, you know, overrides my concerns, that's up to each individual.
Madam President, if I may.
Mr. Pelori?
If I may, the typical business practice in preparing minutes of the meeting is to capture the essential points of the meeting discussed. I understand both sides of the discussion that's going on here. Mrs. Arminio is correct that it should capture everything that'd be discussed. I also understand where Mr. Degorsky is coming from. So my question is, the questions that were raised by Mrs. Arminio, the content of the question and the responses given by the person who was giving the presentation, if the items had been captured within the meeting minutes, then the meeting minutes as presented would suffice. If the questions answered, the answers were not part of the meeting minutes that were prepared, then I agree with Mrs. Arminio that they may have to go back and look at. I can recall a month and a half ago what questions had been asked, what has been responded, but I think that's the common practice. I think having this kind of a discussion in front of a public is probably not the best case. We should have discussed this before the meeting. I think their time is a lot more worth than we going back and forth about meeting minutes.
Well, according to school boards, you just, you never put questions and answers. You give a synopsis of what happened at the meeting. So if we brought this to them, I'm sure that they would agree that what Mr. Degorsky has forwarded to us is okay. Mr. Ryback?
I do remember school boards giving us something in writing as far as the minutes, and it doesn't have to include everything that's being said. But along the lines of Mrs. Arminio's concerns, that's why we videotape our board meetings, because anyone who's really interested in finding out everything that's happening just has to go to the, I want to say, go to the videotape.
Yeah.
I sound like a sportscaster. But that's what they really have to do, and they'll have the information they want.
Thank you.
Madam?
So I think we've.
Except that that is not an official record. The official record is what we vote on tonight.
Mrs. Arminio, we have spent too much time right now on approval of minutes. So we're going to have all in favor, but we're going to do this by a hand vote, just to make sure that we get it right. So everybody who is all in favor, please raise your hand. Anybody opposed? One abstain, two, three abstains, recuse.
I wasn't here.
I wasn't here, so.
For an abstain.
Are they abstaining or recusing if they weren't here?
They would abstain.
They would abstain. Thank you.
Motion passed.
Okay, so we're going to the approval of the minutes for the Public Board of Education meeting of February 13, 2019.
I make a motion to move the meeting minutes.
Accept the meeting.
Mr. Pelori. Second by Mr. Chiarella. Again, additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, everybody who is all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? No opposed, abstained, and recused. Okay? The closed session meeting of February 13, 2019.
Move.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, any additions or corrections to the minutes? Ms. Arminio?
Yes, once again, in closed session, they were not, this does not fully explain what went on in the meeting, so I will be opposing it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My question is, we don't usually put the amounts and things like that. Okay.
No. Raise your hand if you're all in favor. You were in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Right.
Opposed?
I am opposed. There you go.
One opposed, abstained, recused. Okay, at this time, we will go to the presentation of the Support Staff of the Year, Dr. Alvik.
Did you want to handle this one?
Ms. Kalpanowicz, can you join us also out front?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it's a minute. My minute.
At our last board event meeting, we presented our staff, our great staff, District Support Staff Member of the Year. Unfortunately, we were unable to award this particular recipient last month, so we're here tonight to award it. And this goes for the District Office District Support Person of the Year, and that's Ms. Patricia Lee. Patricia, come on up.
Okay, next on our agenda is, oh, next on our agenda is the monthly MTEA Prime Presentation, and I will turn this over to Dr. Alvik.
Thank you. So I have had the distinct pleasure of watching this program grow at Barclaybrook School. Barclaybrook School has been working for the last five years on a steam maker program within the school. This is providing opportunities for our students to code, learn how to actually code, build robots, work with green screens, but ultimately, it's to help them understand that it's okay to make a mistake, that they may not know how to do it yet, and to stretch their bubblegum brains. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Midora, Mrs. Mahoney. They're the, kind of, the people who are behind this program with them. I do, I'm supposed to make a disclaimer on the video. When Mrs. Midora was videotaped for the video, it was on Wacky Wednesday Day, so she wants you to ignore the clothes that she's wearing.
Yes, please do. It's, yes, wait till you see that one. My name is Kristen Miller, and I teach second grade at Barclaybrook School. Mrs. Midora, our librarian, sends her apologies for being unable to make it here tonight. Barclaybrook School has had a school-wide focus on growth mindset and the power of yet. We have been so proud of all the work that our students and teachers have made to build on their grit and resiliency. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our principal, Erin Mahoney, for being front and center in this journey. She has given both the teachers and the students tremendous support and continues to lead the way. We are looking forward to even more great things to come. Although we do love visitors at Barclaybrook, we could not bring all of you into the Barclaybrook classrooms at our steam maker lab this evening, so Nicole and I thought we would bring Barclaybrook to you. So please enjoy seeing our amazing students in action.
We're trying something new. We are encouraging our students to fail, to fail often and to fail magnificently. We use steam and making in our everyday curriculums to provide ample opportunities for them to experience failure in a controlled environment, so they can see that failure is only the beginning. We help our students to stretch their bubblegum brains in order to tackle any problem and overcome any obstacle. They are not only learning science, social studies, language arts, and math, they are learning what to do when Plan A does not succeed. Here's an example of what a steam lesson looks like embedded in the curriculum. Using only your kiva planks, as many as you need, or as few as you think you need, you're going to design a structure that is specially built for the weather conditions in your area. Think about what that force does, whether it's high winds, whether it's heavy, heavy wet snow, whether it's rushing water. It's going to be challenging. Challenging is good, right? If it was too easy, would your brains grow? No. No. Would you be maybe a little bit bored if it was too easy? Yes. Would you be done real fast? Yes. Yes. This is going to take some time, it's going to take some planning, it's going to take bubblegum brain thinking. While all curricular disciplines have areas in which steam and making can be optimally inserted, arguably, it is the science curriculum which is the most natural fit. Barclaybrook students have explored the solar system with the Skyview app and mapped out the observed constellations. They have taken virtual field trips with Google Expedition to visit celestial bodies in our universe. They have hypothesized about elements of pitch and sound with 3D-created instruments, and then created their own while justifying material choices they made. 3D art can demonstrate knowledge of symmetrical aspects of ice crystals, while kiva planks can show prior knowledge of destructive natural events. Watch as two students use green screen technology to bring their Symbols of America research project to life.
She is holding a tablet that says, that says July 4th, 1776, that was America's first birthday.
We also use kiva planks to show what we know about features of land. Check out this lighthouse. And Google Expeditions is used to delve even further into the curricular unit on landforms through use of augmented reality technologies. Second graders learning how nature can change the shape of land use Lego We Do to both build and code a working floodgate in order to understand more deeply the concept of controlling floodwaters. During the Second Grade Around the World Cultural Awareness Project, many aspects of maker and steam activities are utilized when creating their presentations, including computer coding and green screen technologies. There is so much fun to be had while trying and failing and trying again with math concepts in the steam maker lab. We might be using doubles, near-doubles, even an odd, to make a freestanding monster, or rolling the dice to find out how many blocks we need to add or subtract from our block towers. At Barclaybrook, feats of engineering are all around. What can't be done to tie steam and making into language arts units? Here is a Lego story visualizer piece showing understanding of various story elements. When learning about interviewing and adjectives, first and second grade students also learned about designing in three dimensions with Tinkercad. They even had their finished pieces printed out and made into wearable art. Let's wrap this up with a green screen enhanced presentation of an All About Writing piece.
Penguin Club creates, they can march for days, some march for weeks, and most march for hours. They march to get a quota of witnesses.
So what does it all mean? For far too long, the trend has become to remove obstacles to make success as easy as possible for our children. This lawnmower mentality has stripped our students of the resilience and coping skills necessary to truly succeed in both the academic arena and in life in general. At Barclaybrook, we are focusing our energies on teaching our students to become thinkers, planners, strategizers, and perseverers. We are giving them the ability to adapt and overcome in order to give them more control over their successes. Steam and making afford our students the opportunity to develop this grit while simultaneously delivering quality curricular content. We are so excited to see all the many ways that this will shape their lives.
Thank you so much for taking the time to watch. We are very proud, and we are open for visitors, so if you would like to come visit us in action, please, and many of your board members already have, please reach out to Mrs. Mahoney or any of us, and we would love to arrange that during the school day.
Yeah, we had an awful, an awesome time when we came to the maker spaces.
Yes.
Last year, I believe.
Yes.
You're doing wonderful things over there.
Thank you very much.
We all want to go back to second grade.
Please do. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Have a good night, take care.
Okay, at this time, we will be going to the presentation and public hearing of the preliminary 2019-20 school budget. Mr. Goodall, Dr. Alvik, Mr. Gorski.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our annual district school budget presentation. This is one of the most important items that the Central Office, Board of Education, our administrators, our entire school community presents to ensure that we create a annual school budget that meets all of the needs of the students in our district, but also considers the impact to the taxpayer in our community. I'm joined here tonight by my colleagues, Dr. Dori Alvik, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, who had a tremendous input on the budget in developing programs and in the area of curriculum and instruction. And also with me is Mr. Michael Gorski, our Board Administrator, Board Secretary, who, this year as Acting Superintendent, I was in lockstep with Mike from the beginning of the development of this budget, and I have a new appreciation of what goes into creating an efficient budget and a budget that meets the needs of all of our students. So, just wanted to thank Mike and thank Dori for all their hard work and efforts in putting together our budget. In addition, there's a lot of principals and supervisors in, in the audience tonight, what they did in doing a needs assessment of what our teachers and students need, they just did an incredible job. And we're limited by a 2% cap, so when we went back to those principals and supervisors and asked them what they could do without and forego till next year, they were extremely responsible in getting back to us and putting together this great budget. I think you're gonna be very, very pleased as a Board of Education and a community. Of course, the Board of Education, led by our leader Kathy Kalaponowicz, Board President, and our Vice President Steve Ryback, give the administration directive during the budget philosophy meeting. And we feel that some of the items that were identified within that budget philosophy, as directed by the Board of Education, really came through and we accomplished all the things that the Board wanted us to do with our annual budget. Of course, our Finance Committee chaired by Mr. Rutske keeps the administrative team on its toes and provides oversight of the district's finances. They do a tremendous job in helping us give direction for the district and also our budget. What do we do? What are we here for? Why do we do it? Well, our vision statement says that the Monroe Township Board of Education commits itself to all children by preparing them to reach their full potential and to function in a global society through a preeminent education. We believe we have the budget to accomplish that. Our mission statement, the Monroe Public Schools, in collaboration with the members of the community, shall ensure that all children receive an exemplary education by well-trained, committed staff in a safe and orderly environment. And we also believe this budget accomplishes that. Back in the fall, with the help of New Jersey School Boards and the District Administration, Board of Education, Central Administration, put together district goals that we have been reporting out on and will continue to do. Next month, we'll report out another faction of these goals. We wanted to, in goal one, in goal one, to develop innovative student programs. You just saw an example of that with STEM initiatives. We want to continue and expand our STEM initiatives K through 12. We want to continue to develop the whole child through expanding professional development, cultural awareness, and community engagement. We've had many activities during the course of the year under Dr. Alvik's leadership. Expand our current Unified Program district-wide, using high school students integrated with special education students, K through 12. I, I, and, I'm sorry, monthly, report out in my superintendent's report about updates, and we'll have some more information on some of the things that we're doing and the kids have been accomplishing, accomplishing in our Unified Program. And we want to develop learning opportunities for students to understand their civic responsibility historically as citizens. And we'll have a presentation at next month's board meeting as part of updating the board on how we're accomplishing that part of the goal. In goal number two, we wanted to expand and improve school facilities. We engaged the district and community discussions for spring 2019 referendum using the latest enrollment and data and projections. And as we know, we, we came up short in that goal, but we look forward to looking at the next steps to make sure our kids have a great place to go to school. We want to continue to develop a plan for expanded bus parking lot. We know that the goal is to have a complete in-house fleet so that, you know, our local drivers and people vested in our community are the ones transporting our kids, so we continue to look for how we can expand the parking lot and increase our fleet. We wanted to develop expanded safety improvements for all district schools. As we know, last year, during a community-wide safety meeting, the Board got feedback from the community about how we can improve and make sure that our schools are safe. The Board responded very quickly by putting armed officers with the help of Monroe Township Police, and then trained and dispatched our own security officers to ensure safety at schools. The second piece of that plan was to improve five of our schools that don't have updated vestibules to ensure school security. So, you'll see that as part of our budget and responding from, feedback from the community and with board support, we've been able to put that as a plan for this coming summer and beyond to improve those facilities. Goal number three was to improve management and operations, continue to seek fair and equitable state aid funding through engagement with legislators, community involvement, and contributions to a new funding formula in the interest of the Monroe Township School District. We, at every meeting, we discuss how Monroe is entitled to more state aid and how we will accomplish that. So, more information on that to come. Research and review the administrative organizational structure to determine the administrative efficiency with recommendations. We've been observing that as an administrative team all year, and we'll have recommendations for the Board at the end, close of the school year. The Board also developed goals with New Jersey School Boards to evaluate and adopt a plan for enrollment growth and facility needs. Goal number two, to encourage professional development for the Board, working towards New Jersey School Board's Board Certification, and for individual Board members, the Board will review the samplings of programs to decide upon programs for additional training. And I know several Board members have been attending these training sessions. Goal number three, to engage in a superintendent search process, and I know that's gonna be underway soon. So, in summary, the Monroe Township School Budget for 2019-2020 school year was developed with specific parameters set forth by the Board Philosophy Directive. We believe this Board encompasses all of these requests from the Board of Education. To prepare a comprehensive budget, meeting the needs of 182 projected additional students in our district. Construct security vestibules at five remaining schools and address aging facilities. Mr. Jerry Take does an incredible job maintaining and being proactive at all of our schools to ensure that they're in the best possible condition for teachers to teach and students to learn. Create budget savings through surplus and use of reserves. Replace contracted bus routes with new in-house fleet. Expand curriculum and staffing. That's one of the most important things that we do, to develop programs to meet the needs of all of our students and to ensure that our kids are as competitive as our neighbors and competitive statewide and globally, so they can move on and have a career pathway and attend the best universities and colleges that are out there, and we are doing that. We want a budget to cap utilizing expanded bank cap of $600,000 to meet the needs of student group. The budget has been professionally constructed to afford every student an opportunity for an exemplary education by well-trained, committed staff in a secure and safe environment. Opportunity is made available through a comprehensive curriculum which offers diverse course offerings and co-curricular clubs and activity, activities. We believe that our proposed budget continues to become more efficient, as evidenced by a successful county budget efficiency review, whereas Monroe was exemplified for many best financial practices, and that's a credit to the entire Central Office, especially the Business Office. So, again, key budgetary considerations, an increase of 182 additional students projected, aging facilities, core curriculum content area, student teacher ratios, our budget, an increase in staffing is running alongside those increasing student enrollment projections that we've been talking about all year. You know, reasonable class size makes very effective teachers. And then, of course, the tax impact on the community. What is in the budget creation timeline? Establish of that budget philosophy, the Board directed the Central Office Administration in early fall to follow with budget philosophy. We look at historical enrollment patterns, so we can properly staff our buildings and budget. Review of staffing needs. Budget development. Central Office worked very closely with the building principals and our district supervisors, who did a needs assessment with teachers and provided very responsible budget that we worked through in order to get within the 2% cap. And I just really have to, again, thank the building principals and the supervisors for a job well done. They go through their defense rounds. At times, we have to make needed cuts because we are limited by that 2% cap, and, again, they respond very responsibly in order to meet the needs of all of the students. So, it's just a, a great collaborative and collegial effort by the administrative team. We look forward to the Governor's Budget Address in terms of what financial help the state might give us, in terms of easing the tax burden and making the budget work within that 2% cap, and we await our award for state aid. And then, we adopt a tentative budget, which we're presenting tonight, and we have a hearing to discuss that budget. This time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Alvik to talk about all the great things, program, programs and curriculum that are in this budget.
Good evening. So, at this time, I always enjoy sharing with you some of our accomplishments that we did during this past, the past year as we were preparing our budget. The 2018 graduation rate was 97.5%. That's actually up 2% from the previous year. And we monitor the students who do not graduate. Remember, that's a June graduation rate, so some students need to take a course in the summer, and they do graduate in August. So, we kind of work through that, but that's the June graduation rate according to the New Jersey DOE. The 2018 graduates included 89.2% of our students going to either a two or a four-year college, 2.7% attend career or technical schools, we had 1.4% students enter the military, 4.9% entered the workforce, 1.8% were undecided. 87.3% of our students taking the AP test scored a three or better. We had 805, 805 AP tests were taken last spring. And of that number, 703 students scored a three or better. So, which is wonderful. We continue to have our higher than the state average scores on the SAT and ACT, and last June, 27 seniors graduated with the New Jersey Seal of Bileiteracy. This year, we have, I think we found out 19, right? 19 students just passed the test to graduate this June with the New Jersey Seal of Bileiteracy, which means they are, they are able to communicate in at least two languages. We're continuing to evaluate, revise our programs. The only new program that is actually in the, there are two new additions to our budget for this year. One of them is a new science resource, a new science textbook for K to 5 students that is in our, in our budget. And the other is a civics class that we will be implementing as a half-year course in the seventh grade for all students next year at our middle school. We are continually using data to assess our students, to assess our programs, to see what we need to include, and one of those ways that we're doing that is through the MAP Assessment, Measures of Academic Progress. We implemented that K to 8, three years ago. This year, we've implemented it 9 through 11th grade, so we're starting to use that data at the high school level. We also utilize the DRA-2, which is the Developmental Reading Assessment, K through 5, and some in the middle school. We continuously offer professional development to all of our staff. One way we're able to keep the cost down on that is we train our teachers and our staff members to be the trainers. So, we're not sending a lot of people out for out-of-district workshops, which are a lot more expensive. We use our trainers, or we bring people into the district, so we're able to save some money that way. We do offer professional memberships. Some of our teachers, such as our music teachers or our band teachers, must have professional memberships in order to take our students to all of the wonderful competitions and programs that they have, so we maintain those memberships. We're also continuing, continuously growing the Avid program at our middle and high school, and next school year, we will be looking to pilot it at the Woodland Elementary School utilizing title funds. It's a little bit different at the elementary level. Middle school, you've heard, there's an elective class, students take the elective class in place of one of their other electives, they're in a cohort, they're identified, they have to apply for the program. At the elementary school, it's a little different. It's more that we train all of the teachers in all of the best practices, best strategies from Avid, so that all of the students at the elementary school can take advantage of the strategies that are offered. So, we're going to start piloting that next year at the Woodland School and see how that kind of goes. As well as all of the programs that you'll see here pictured in our program, we are also having, we've added 32 new staff members to the budget for next year. That is primarily teachers. There is no new administrative staff in this budget. We recognize the need that we have students coming to our district, and we have to make sure that we have a, the certified teachers in front of the classroom, so there are 34 new staff members. These include an elementary art teacher, I'm not gonna go through every single one of them, a, several teachers at the high school, including family and consumer science, business, and math, five new middle school teachers, a PE teacher, three new self-contained teachers for our special education population, and several paraprofessionals, two new drivers, and a social worker, and a guidance counselor for our middle school. That, that includes some of them, but it's 32 staff members, no new administration. So, some of the programs you see, all of our wonderful things that are happening in our schools, we're expanding our school gardens at all of our elementary schools, we continuously implement technology throughout our schools. SEL stands for Social Emotional Learning, that's all of the work that, that the, the schools are doing with character education, and also the Whole Child Committee and the work that they're doing. Project Unified is continuing to expand, we are moving it down into the elementary and the middle school level. Mrs. Dillon is working with the administrators at the middle school and all the elementary schools where we have self-contained classes, and we're implementing different programs in the schools depending on the students. I'm not gonna take your report, Patty, but Patty will have something else to share about our Project Unified soccer team later on in the meeting. We continuously offer programs for our students, such as our award-winning music programs, our extracurricular clubs at the middle and high school, we offer geography bees, spelling bees, math counts competitions, there's lots of things going on in all of our schools all the time within this budget. Again, we, you heard already tonight about the Barkley Brook STEM and Maker Space, but there are Maker Spaces in all of our elementary schools' media center, our media center at the middle school and here at the high school, and they are continuously used by students, improving our robotics and our engineering program using Project Lead the Way. We're also offering to our students the certification in auto, auto rivet, Autodesk Rivet, yes, and Autodesk Inventor, so our students at the high school level in some of these classes will So our students at the high school level in some of these classes will be able to take that certification with them outside of, outside of school, similar to the Seal of Bileiteracy education, certification. As Mr. Goodall mentioned, we are adding school security vestibules in five of our schools that do not have the double locked entrance, so those will be added within this budget. That's just another way that we're trying to secure our buildings. Our portable classroom units, we still will need to pay the rent on the portable classroom units at the middle school. That will be ongoing. We do not have additional portable classroom units in this budget. However, for the 2021 school year, we absolutely will need more trailers based on our students. We have a transportation fleet expansion. We are getting nine new 54-passenger buses. Eight of those are required because those buses are aging out. One of them is an additional, an additional 54-passenger bus. We're also getting two new vans. One is for an aging 25-passenger van, the other van is an additional van. Again, that's to help bring back some of the routes that are out of district, to bring them back, back into district. So we're, we're trying to grow that as fiscally responsibly as we can. And that's where you see the information about that. I mentioned the, the security vestibules. There, we're also looking to upgrade our lobby guard system, which is our screening system for any of our visitors coming in from out of, outside, so that will, we will be looking to do that, adding additional security cameras. And we're also looking to replace the wood flooring on the high school bleachers in the football stadium with aluminum, and that is due to a recommendation from the engineer that we have every year that, that looks at all of our, our facilities. And that's a recommendation that came from him, so we need to do that and include that in this budget. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Gorski.
Thank you, Doctor. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming to the budget presentation. Where does the money come from? The budget is defined by revenues. That, that determines the size of the budget. And this particular pie chart is going to win no fans in this audience. This shows that state aid is less than 5% of the overall budget. Federal aid is less than 1%. We're a public school district, and that's all the entitlement we have to state in federal aid. The majority of the budget is mandated and, and by the state, however. Fund balance, which is savings from prior-year budgets, makes up almost 4% of the budget. Transfers from other funds is a little less than 1%, and we'll go through that a little later. Local taxes is 86% of the revenue sources that support the school district. Tuition from Jamesburg, our receiving school district, is a little less than 4%. Transportation fees miscellaneous revenue account for about a half a percent. So that's where the monies come from, and that defines the size of our budget. So when you heard Mr. Goodall talk about the constrictions of being a cap, a cap is a calculation that comes into how much we can grow the general fund tax levy every year. And here's some facts on Monroe's state aid. There are two types of state aid, and we'll get more into this in a moment. Equalization aid is the largest type of state aid. If you look at some of our surrounding school districts like South Brunswick, you could go to their website and pull up their user-friendly budget, and you'll see their revenue categories for state aid. They get over $20 million in equalization aid. Monroe has never received any. Equalization aid is designed to support a district's adequacy budget, and the state formula determines how much of this equalization aid you get from your award. Where districts have high income levels from your New Jersey 1040s, that's that four-digit code that you may be familiar with from filing your taxes, and also your property ratable base, which is how the property taxes are assessed, those two factors are key in the determination of how much equalization aid you can get. Now, we've contended over the years that every child should get some minimum amount of equalization aid factored into this calculation. We receive zero. So to make, to finance an adequate budget, it's on the backs of the Monroe taxpayers. The other type of aid that we qualify for is called categorical aid, and like the name describes, there are different categories that you qualify for in this category. Special education aid, transportation aid, security aid are a few of them, and we'll get to some of the details on that in a moment. Our transportation department, by the way, is the highest efficiently rated transportation department in the county and among the highest in the state, and that is why half of our categorical aid is in the form of transportation aid. And again, total state aid is less than 5% of total revenues, one of the lowest state aid per pupil ratios in the county. This is a comparison of our general fund state aid, and I would, I would describe this as what's known in the business field as a dead cat bounce. Last year, we received $5.3 million of aid. This year, we're slightly off the bottom with a 12% increase that sounds bigger than it is. It's a little more than $600,000 of additional state aid. Now, S2, which is part of the school funding formula, adjusting it, is a framework to take districts to full funding over the next five years. And Monroe is on the pathway to full funding, but I contend that even fully funded, our district will only get an additional $3 million above where we are now, and we will not be satisfied as a community until we receive a new funding formula. So we had to go and look at additional revenue sources because taxes are growing up to the capped amount. Where else can you meet the needs of 186 new students, aging facilities, $1 million required for school vestibule projects, new curriculum additions, new textbooks, new buses, et cetera? Fortunately, the board created a very successful Falcon Care and Early Childhood Enrichment Program. These are proprietary programs that operate as business models, not like the general fund school district, which is designed to break even every year. The Falcon Care and ECE is a profit source, and every year has earned between $500,000 and $600,000. The funds have earned $1.6 million in their first three years of inception, and the board is able to transfer $600,000 of retained earnings, which is unrestricted, to the general fund to offset some of the costs of growth and to keep taxes down. $400,000 is recommended to be transferred from the iPad insurance fund. This is as per board policy, where a collection of money is raised by students to pay for insurance for the iPads. Damages and claims have been down, and, and the surplus in this fund was designed to help the refreshment, which the lease payment for the iPads is in this year's budget, so that's a, that's a prudent offset of that cost. And fortunately, as we presented with the district comprehensive annual financial report, we are experiencing near-full employment right now, and our unemployment compensation fund, which is self-funded, has a surplus, which administration feels comfortable in reclaiming $200,000 that was transferred into this fund back in 2008. So you could say we're looking under every cushion to help meet the obligations of growth and facilities. There were handouts up front, and we're going to post all of this information on our website. The first one, labeled A, shows a comparative sources of revenue in too much detail to put on a PowerPoint slide, but we want you to see where every penny comes from. What's noteworthy here is our general fund balance that carries over from prior-year budgets has depleted this year by about $1 million. That means we're living off of savings a little bit to finance this year's budget. That is not a good fiscal practice, but it's one that doesn't raise too much alarm because we still have a decent fund balance to carry over. We talked about transfers from other fund. Thank goodness, we have the Falcon Care ECE program that has been a cash cow, generating money every year via board resolution to help offset the budget. iPad renewal, capital reserve. Local taxes is 85% of the budget. It is growing to the maximum capped amount and utilizing $600,000 of bank cap as per the board's budget philosophy directive. Other revenue consists of tuition, transportation fees, and miscellaneous revenue. State aid, all the different categories are delineated, and federal aid. Total revenues are $135,269,475 for all funds. It is a 2.96% increase to the total budget for all funds, general fund, special revenue fund, debt service fund. The next sheet is B. And I touched on this moments ago. B is the historical chart of state aid from 2008, 2009 school year to present. And you could see that our state aid has been fairly linear during this whole period of time, despite the district picking up over 1,800 students. We are on a pathway to full funding, where in the next five years, we are entitled to $3 million more, but that's dependent upon state revenues. And again, we're very proud of the transportation aid that we earned here by being the most efficient transportation fleet in the county and among the highest in the state by running a four-tier system where we have the same bus and bus driver on the road serving all of the schools instead of doing individual routes and going back to the yard. The next packet is stapled together is, is letter C. This is all of the appropriations for all funds for next year. It covers all of the general fund programs, the special education programs, the debt service fund, which pays principal and interest on the outstanding bonds. 85% of the appropriations are fixed, meaning they're contractually driven by labor agreements. That also includes health insurance, which is one of our largest items in the budget. It is approximately a $24 million account, one which my office and I take particular interest in negotiating as low as possible every year. And we have a rather unfortunate claims history in Monroe. We have a 90% loss ratio, which is kind of like if your automobile, it would be akin to having a bad crash history. Okay? When you run up claims, your premiums go up, and that's how health insurance works with us. Because of that, Horizon came out and gave us a written proposal for a 10% increase in premiums. That's unaffordable, and it will not fit in this budget. So that gave us great anxiety and a challenge. We went and met with other health insurance carriers, and we got competitive quotes, but we were not going to present to the board a competitive quote that may have been advantageous without a rate lock for year two because we didn't want to teaser rate and disrupt everybody's current health insurance for such a practice. From 10%, we negotiated it down to 5.4, and we still weren't satisfied, and it ended at a very favorable 4.8% increase. Our average over the last few years is under 5%, and that is a fiscal best practice for this district. We have a very rich benefits package that we all enjoy, and, and through this process of negotiations with our broker, with our HR director, with my accounting supervisor and myself, we twist Horizon's arm until they buckle every year. Will this continue next year? I can't say. We'll give it our best shot every year. There may be a year where I have to recommend a changing carrier to the board, but this is not one of them. Budgets are driven by student enrollment. The question came up a few years ago, how come you can't produce a budget that's flatten taxes or even give us a tax reduction? Private companies can do that. Private companies don't have variable costs going up as much as our enrollment has. Over the last seven years, we picked up 910 students, a 15% increase. It's even more dramatic if you look slightly back further than that. And as Dr. Alvik pointed out, this drives the amount of teachers that we need in this budget, the amount of bus drivers that are required to be employed, security guards. We also have a new technology staff member because of the needs of the district. These all went through defense rounds and are consistent with the board's goals and policies. And where does the money go? This pie chart, which again was put on our website, shows 52% is directly spent on educational programs as meeting the state's definition of instructional categories. However, I contend that transportation of students and benefits, which is largely for educational staff members, if included in that number, would boost it over 60%. The money goes and stays in the classroom. Athletics co-curricular is about 1.3%, debt service about 9%. We don't have any play in that. That's all based on prior amortization schedules. Administration's 2.8%. Capital projects are less than 1%, grants 1%, and transportation's about 6%. The money does not go to administrative costs. From the latest Taxpayer Guide to Educational Spending, and if anybody would like to familiarize themselves with that document, it's produced by the Department of Education. You can simply Google the New Jersey Taxpayer Guide to Educational Spending. The latest one out is for 2018, and it shows that the state median for administrative costs for a district that is K-12, 3,500-plus students, which we are in that category, is $1,674 per student. The state average is $1,619 per student. Monroe's is $1,555. We are very proud of our administrative costs, and we compare very favorably in any state comparative metric. The appropriations detail I talked about before, you will see a lot of account decreases in there. Monroe starts with a zero-based budget, which if you're not familiar with the term, it means that we don't just pad 2%, 3% on last year's budget number and hand that out. That's common in school districts. We don't do that here. We, we wipe this, the blackboard clean and start over every year by going into the supply cabinets, seeking how much inventory's on hand, how many students are coming next year, what your actual needs are, what mandates are required, and each department and each school builds their own zero-based budget from scratch, and they go through a rigorous round of defense with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and I, to make sure that all those appropriations are consistent with board goals and district goals. We are confident that this year they are. And soon, we will post the user-friendly budget for this year's budget once adopted tonight. We are very proud of the cost savings from shared services. These are how we remain so efficient of an operation. Food service program applies for USDA government commodities. These are no-cost commodities that we, that Mrs. Mitresak, food service director, and I have to go through a lengthy application process to get, but we get non-perishable goods and some perishable goods delivered in secure trucks that meet the standard for delivery from the government, and that saves us $200,000 in cost of goods sold for food products. That's why our, our lunch prices here are among the lowest in the county. Technology services. We have inter-local service agreements with the municipality to share the costs of the Motorola radio system and 911 system. We save $55,000 a year. E-rate, educational rate program, which creates reimbursements for technology and telecommunications costs. We participate in that, and we save $125,000. We also have inter-local service agreements with the municipality to share TV hosting services, where we save $50,000 as if we had to go it on our own. Professional staff and development. Dr. Alvik does a fine job incorporating the development of curriculum with input from Jamesburg, our receiving school district, and that saves us $7,500. As I mentioned, the district is very proud of one of our best fiscal practices, which is the development of two spectacular- is the development of two spectacular programs, Falcon Care and Early Childhood Enrichment, where we've made over one-point-six million dollars in the last three years. Unrestricted money to help keep taxes down and meet the needs of growth. The district shared one million dollars of additional state aid award with the taxpayers in lieu of appropriating it last year. We received one-point-six million dollars of additional state aid after last year's budget was set, and this Board resolved to send one million back against the levy and put six-hundred thousand to meet the needs of aging facilities. We also have solar renewal energy credits of thirty thousand dollars a year. Oak Tree has solar panels that generate electricity. We sell it back to the utility company for thirty grand. And use of building policy raises about one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Purchasing. We have an inter-local services agreement with the municipality regarding the refurbishing of our tennis courts. That saved the district three-hundred thousand dollars previously. That agreement's in place for the next few years. We have cooperative purchasing system for the procurement of everything that's considered a supply item and many other goods and services. We've saved over four million dollars since joining that program just in supplies as compared to if we bought it through bid or state contract. This year, we're expecting three-hundred-and-fifty thousand in savings, and that's from the consortium. We recycle everything we can. We make fifteen thousand dollars from that. Transportation services. One of the reasons that we're so efficient is our directors constantly on the phone with other school districts trying to share routes with them where we may be sending students to the same private schools. We save about a hundred thousand dollars a year through transportation jointures. We have an inter-local agreement that was just established with the fire department for the use of diesel fuel pumps. It's budgeted that it's going to save a thousand dollars for the district. We participate in New Jersey School Board Association Insurance Group. Eric North, every year, we're entitled to a safety grant. This year is thirty-nine thousand, seven-eighty-four. Workers' compensation policy through New Jersey School Board Insurance Group versus New Jersey Crib Rates. Four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars in savings was saved just in workers' comp this year. And finally, I mentioned, we're very proud of the negotiation of a four-point-eight percent increase in health insurance rates from the initial ten percent with Horizon. And that's not so easy. Horizon is a monopoly that controls seventy percent of the marketplace in New Jersey, and it's very difficult to get that kind of success. What factors influence the tax rate? Number one is state aid. Monroe has the second lowest taxes in the county. However, our amount of state aid is very unattractive compared to other school districts that are slightly less affluent and with less property wealth than we are. If we had more state aid, like for example, if I had the award from South Brunswick, we would be looking at a head-spinning reduction in taxes in this year's budget despite all of the new appropriations. Number two is fund balance. This is something we can control. Superintendent has put down in January a non-essential purchase order freeze where, quite frankly, if anything hasn't been purchased for use in schools by January, you probably don't need it or can forego it until next year. And that, believe it or not, saves about nine-hundred thousand dollars a year. Ratables are a big factor in controlling the tax rate. My first year as business administrator, we had an unprecedented seventy-one million dollar drop in ratables, which caused approximately a five-cent increase in the budget without additional appropriations of a dollar. Ratables are the property valuations through town that share the levy. So the more homes, in Monroe's case, that are built, there are more homeowners sharing in the levy, so everybody's individual rate is suppressed. This year, ratables grew two percent compared to last year. That is very favorable. And increased student enrollment certainly has an effect on appropriations. It's a variable cost and an important one. And here's how everything pans out for this year. We've given you four years of history here because every one of those preceding four years is extremely attractive, in my opinion. My predecessor said, if you roll out a budget, Mike, and you're at seven cents or less, it's a winner. And what you can see here is seventeen, we went up three-and-a-half cents, less than a cent in eighteen, one-point-seven cents last year, two-point-one cents increase this year. For an average assessed home at approximately three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, that is a tax increase in the nineteen-twenty budget of school taxes for sixty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. And unlike our budget presentation, that is not an assessment of a hundred thousand dollar increment, that is based on an average assessed home at three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, to give a better, fairer picture of what the school tax increase will be considering all of the new mandates, programs, facility needs, curriculum needs that this district Thank everybody who'll contribute to this budget, especially many of the folks at the back table.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. So we feel we've... (applause) Thank you. That sounds very well received. Thank you again to everyone who helped put this budget together, and we feel it's very efficient, it's very responsible, but is also creative and innovative to meet all of our students' needs. So thank you very much.
Madam Board President, if it pleases the Board, I would like to read a resolution for the adoption of the tentative budget for years nineteen-twenty.
Okay.
It is recommended to the Monroe Township Board of Education that the nineteen-twenty tentative general fund budget be adopted in the amount of one-hundred-twenty-two million, four-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. And a tentative general fund local tax levy in the amount of one-hundred-and-four million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. And a tentative special revenue fund in the amount of one-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. And a tentative debt service budget in the amount of eleven-million-six-hundred-and-eight thousand, seventy-six dollars. And a tentative debt service levy in the amount of eleven-million-one-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, whereby the tentative nineteen-twenty budget totals one-hundred-and-thirty-five million, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has been notified of state aid amounts, and whereas such state aid amounts are for the nineteen-twenty-year categorical special education aid, three-million-fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, and for the nineteen-twenty categorical security aid is one-hundred-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. And the nineteen-twenty categorical transportation aid is two-million-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, nineteen dollars. And the nineteen-twenty debt service aid is four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars. And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has estimated a state aid amount pursuant to application, and for the nineteen-twenty year, the estimated extraordinary aid is three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. And whereas Policy Number six-four-seven-one in NJAC six-A colon twenty-three-A dash seven-point-three provides that the Board of Education shall establish in the annual school budget a maximum expenditure amount that may be allotted for travel and expense reimbursement for the nineteen-twenty school year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby establishes the school district travel maximum for the nineteen-twenty school year at the tentative sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. And be it further resolved that the school business administrator shall track and record these costs to ensure that the maximum amount is not exceeded. And be it further resolved that, as recommended by the Board's Budget Philosophy Resolution, that the Board transfer six-hundred thousand dollars of retained earnings from the proprietary Falcon Care Fund as a revenue source in the nineteen-twenty general fund budget, and that the Board transfer four-hundred thousand dollars from the IPAD insurance fund surplus as a revenue source in the nineteen-twenty general fund budget, and that the Board transfer two-hundred thousand dollars from the unemployment compensation fund surplus as a revenue source in the nineteen-twenty general fund budget. Whereas due to consistent student enrollment and growth and facility needs and other priorities set forth in the Board's Budget Philosophy Resolution, the Board is budgeting to maximum spending authority, including six-hundred thousand dollars of bank cap. Now therefore let it be resolved that the Acting Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrative Board Secretary file all the required documents with the Executive County Superintendent.
So move.
Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Mr. Ryback? Are there any comments, questions for Mr. Gorski or anybody else on Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, I'm going to support this budget. There's a couple of things in here, though, that I just wanted to mention, and I think that I think are pretty important. You know, so first is the importance of our own fleet and, you know, the transition that we're making. So what I've been told is that we're at about eighty-five percent of our own fleet at this point. I just want to just keep impressing upon this Board the importance of us moving toward getting as close to a hundred percent as possible because we vet our own bus drivers. Kathy McDonald does a very good job of overseeing the program, making sure it's properly staffed, making sure that the background checks are done, and then the everyday management of not only the routes but of our team. And I think that we don't get that same benefit by outsourcing. So we have to keep moving in that direction. Now, what scares me, though, is that we're, you know, we're going to have trailers next year, obviously the ones at the middle school, but we're probably going to end up with trailers here at the high school as well. And my fear, and hopefully Mr. Gorski can speak to it a little bit, is just that without the six-hundred thousand dollars in bank cap next year and with the, you know, with the need for the trailers, the referendum didn't pass, do we foresee any cuts for the next budget? And I know this is too soon, we haven't gone through that yet, but it does worry me that we're heading in that direction at this point. And the one thing that I will say with regards to that is that we send approximately, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, forty million dollars to Trenton every year. We get back about five million dollars from Trenton in aid. And basically, on a one-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollar budget, it really means we still self-fund, and that's a crime. Our taxpayers are being wrong. We all are. I'm going to, you know, and I don't want to go all over the place. I'd like to just have those things addressed, but I will say to Mr. Polari, who, and I wish him luck in the new, in his, you know, with his committee, but we really need to look toward and actually have some action with suing the state. Whether it, you know, we want, you were on the committee, on our Fair Funding Committee. We looked at a number of different things that we might be able to go after. I think that we just need to take the gloves off and go after them and just do what we have to do. So if that's going to be the direction of that committee, I'm on board a hundred percent with helping you the way you helped us, you know, and I'll leave it at that, but that's it. Thank you.
So to clarify what Mr. Chiarella is saying, the money in the budget for the trailers for next year are the current trailers at Middle Sec, the middle school?
Yes, as Dr. Alvik, Mr. Goodall and I presented, there are no additional trailers budgeted for in the nineteen-twenty budget. We still have the current rent payment for the ones that are in front of the middle school. However, for the next year, which is going to be twenty-twenty-one's budget, it is projected that there will be a material increase in the budget for trailer lease payments. Now, where you have a capped budget and you have an additional appropriation requirement for trailer rental that has to come from the general fund budget, unlike principal and interest for a new school, which would come from a separate debt service fund, it will have to be budgeted for, and it will inherently supplant existing programs and services, to which extent, we don't know because we haven't studied how many exactly we're going to need yet. But Dr. Alvik, Mr. Goodall and I presented to the communities on our vast tour of the bond referendum presentations that trailers are the greatest fiscal threat to this district, and unfortunately, that is causing anxiety right now as it is not in the nineteen-twenty budget but in twenty-twenty-one, which will be here soon.
Thank you. Anyone, Mr. Polari?
Kathy, thank you. First of all, thank you very much, Ken, for wishing me, but you're not wishing me, you're wishing the entire community, because although I'm chairing the committee, I'm just being a representative and hoping that a lot more people would join this, and I'll give my report later on. Am I to believe that although the referendum failed, we will not be putting any new trailers in the year twenty-twenty, either at the middle or the high school? And the reason for asking the question is, I know that we looked at the budget, first of all, I want to congratulate Mr. Gorski and the superintendent, everybody involved in doing the budget, having been to a few of these and looking at the actual size of the budget. I think that's the book that you have, Mike, in front of you. That's the actual size of the budget for twenty-twenty. Thank you very much for doing that, and thanks for your efforts. So my question is, we have done that before the referendum failed on Tuesday. So does the budget remain the same for twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty fiscal year?
Madam?
Yes.
It was incumbent upon Dr. Alvik, Mr. Tagg, Mr. Goodall and I to meet with the principals at the beginning process of the construction of the nineteen-twenty budget and project student enrollment growth, facility limitations, and the need for trailers. It was a consensus of all the principals, supervisors, and administrators that we do not need additional trailers beyond what's deployed already at the middle school for the next budget year, which is nineteen-twenty. However, for twenty-twenty-one, there was a strong indication that there will be trailers needed, perhaps at more than one site, and we have to study this yet. And they are going to be costly, and they're going to have to supplant existing programs and services and appropriations in a capped budget, and it's going to be a challenge in order to fit that and jam those costs into the budget.
Anyone, Mr. Ryback?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Mr. Chiarella for his comments, and certainly like to say I support them. Ken, you're spot on. Andy, I certainly wish you the best with the whole committee. I know how motivated we all are on this, but I just want to say it's to the budget. I congratulate certainly Mr. Gorski, his team, and Superintendent, Dr. Alvik, all their work. Kathy, it was always great working with you on this. I know we're involved with it, but I just want to mention, I know how hard you worked, Mike, on the health issue and the health insurance issue. And, you know, it would have been a totally different story if you weren't leading the charge in those negotiations there. So thank you. It made a big difference. Thank you.
Madam?
Yes, Mr. Gorski.
My pleasure. Certainly, it doesn't mean to toot my own horn, but had we settled for something in the middle between ten percent and the four-point-eight, which where we ended up, I would have to have a serious conversation with Mr. Goodall and say that the Board's Budget Philosophy Directive of the security vestibule projects, which are approximately a million dollars for five schools and thirty-two new staff, is an impossibility because it just won't fit in the cap. Fortunately, we never had to have that conversation, but the concern remains in the future.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to add...
Mr. DeFano?
I'd just like to add that I think it's very commendable that this school district kept its promises to the parents of all the students about safety. I'm glad that we added that into our budget for the vestibules and on our security guards because we saw a huge outcry for that after the tragedies that happened in Florida, and I'd just like to commend everybody for keeping promises.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Arminio?
Yes. So this budget is a preliminary budget, right? There could be discussions about reviewing some of the things in the budget, is that correct?
There could be changes between now and the final budget in April.
Okay. When we were at the finance meeting, I had made a few comments about some projected new clubs or some other things, and while they are minimal... projected new clubs or some other things, and while they are minimal impact on the budget, especially now after the referendum passed, failed two years in a row, I would think that it would be prudent of us as a Board to review some things that are non-academic, and, and go over a few things, and maybe show a little bit of consideration for the concerns of some of our stakeholders, and maybe eliminate some, again, non-essential, non-academic programs that we might have wanted to put into play. So I would ask that we would consider that going forward before we have the final budget. But I do have a question about something that was said. Mr. Gorski said that Monroe is the second lowest property taxes in the county. Is that the municipal budget, or is that our whole overall budget?
It's combined, actually.
It's combined?
Combined.
So with, with the increase in taxes for all of our enrollment, it's, we're still the lowest in, the second lowest in the county?
That is correct.
Okay. The, the only thing that I'm, I'm concerned about with resolutions going forward about state, state aid is, we are impacted most generally on the local level, on the construction level, things that are going on. So as we approach the state, which we've tried to do for seventeen years to no avail, I would also ask that we consider approaching the township and, and speaking to them about the kinds of, the rapid construction that is compelling us and necessitating the construction of new schools, which we, we desperately need, and I'm sorry that twice the budget has, the referendums have failed. But I think we need to listen to the concerns and fears of the people, maybe somewhat misplaced by, and, and voting down the referendum, but they are fears and concerns nevertheless. And I think if we wanna address these issues with our state officials, I think we also have to be responsible for addressing it with our local officials, because that is where the construction issues are coming from. That is where the overwhelming necessity for constructing schools in Monroe is, is coming from. So I, I think that we need to take a look at the budget, a few things in the budget to show at least some humility and concern for what the stakeholders have, have told us. And, and it's not just these last two referendums, it's been years and years and years, and I think that we've been hearing what people have been saying, but we really haven't been listening. So I think as a, as a... So again, I think as a respectful reevaluation of some of the non-essential things that we have in the budget, yes, we want a Cadillac community, Monroe has, has served its community well and its students well, but there are some things in here, again, minor costs, but costs nonetheless, that we should reconsider for the, before we solidify this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else's comments? Mr. Ryback?
I just have one thing to say, Armonio, it looks like, you know, I have a little disputes here and there, but this is, I'm just wording, and I understand where you're coming from, and I just wanna clarify one thing, at least for me. I know the defeat of the referendum is gonna be difficult on certainly the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget, it seems something's gonna have to go. I'd just be cautious about using non-essential and, and non-academic. To me, not everything that's non-academic is not, i, i, if it's not, if it's non-academic, it could still be essential. There are a lot of children that certainly benefit from non-academic courses, so I'd be careful about, you know, making them, they're not really equal, I guess.
I'd like to clarify. I am definitely not talking about any courses. In fact, after the referendum went down, I was a little dismayed to hear some, and, and it may have been just the heat of the moment, but some administrators talking about taking away AP courses, or taking away certain electives and things like that, that is, that is definitely not my position. I don't believe we, as a Board or, or as administration, there should be any punitive responses to this referendum failing, and there should, and there should be no, like, response in the negative. But there are times that we, and I, and again, I might not have the right word, but there, there may be times that we have some things in our budget that we really can do without.
That's fine.
So I definitely was dismayed that there were some seemingly punitive responses to the, the bug, the referendum going down, and I would definitely not like to hear that.
Can, can, Ms. Armonio, respectfully, during our referendum presentations?
Yes.
The administrative team spoke about the impact the trailers would have on our general operating budget, and we talked about if the situation compounded year to year, and the more money we took out of that general operating budget. In fact, as part of our presentation, we spoke about the inability of the administration and the teachers to provide a lot of our programs that we've added since we eliminated the trailers the first time through referendum, a successful referendum and buildings opening. Just to clarify, I, I don't recall, and I was there too when the referendum went down, any administrator making any comments about eliminating essential programs of the success of the kids. We did mention it during our presentations as, you know, the inability to hire teachers, the reduction of some programs, because there are, some of our AP courses are not mandated. So some things would be on the table, but I just wanted to clarify that because the administrative team worked very, very hard to pass this referendum, and certainly, you know, we have to be realists about what our next steps are, and if we have to lease trailers, but certainly, we, we didn't put it out there that we would come in any vindictive nature or take it out on the kids because the referendum didn't pass. And I, I just felt it was important to state that.
Well, I certainly hope so.
Mr. Gorski, I think I ask this question every year, but if we were to cut one cent from the tax rate, how much does that equal?
A penny is approximately one point six million dollars.
So that would mean if, if we needed to cut a penny out of the tax rate, we'd have to find one point six million dollars in the operating budget to, to cut?
Yeah, we have a large penny valuation here based upon the ratables and the reeval that happened years ago, and it's approximately one point six million dollars to reduce it by a penny.
Okay.
Madam President, or we could get one point six million dollars in additional aid from the state.
If we got one point, that would be wonderful, then we could cut a penny out of the budget. Yeah. Does any other Board member have any comments or questions? Okay, then this time I'm gonna open it up to the public, if anybody has any comments to make in regard to just the budget, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we will adhere to our four-minute timeline.
Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Polari?
I think we have a motion on the table.
I know, but this is a public, this is part of the public participation?
Thanks for the budget, okay, thank you very much. Again, you know, as Mr. Gorski mentioned, we got six hundred thousand dollars or from the state funding increase. Now, we were also discussing outside the thoughts, how we can sue the government, because that, that's what, we want to be winners if you sue. So please consider this, sue the state for not fully funding, as per the formula. They say the formula is constitutional, so they didn't fund fully for last from two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen. So you are talking about fifty-five million dollars there. Then, they are not going to fund us fully for next five years. So another, you are talking about five to ten million dollars. So we have, think over it, we have a chance to sue because the state itself is not following the constitutional formula to fund us, okay? So Lakewood has been very powerful, they went and sued even, they didn't get full funding for the special education and transportation, and we have been saying that we are not getting full funding for the special education. So first item is sue them, they didn't fund us for the last ten years, they are not funding us fully for next five years. Then, like Lakewood, let us go and sue them, they are not giving funding us adequately for special education and transportation, and Lakewood got fifteen million more. So this is the thought process, please consider it, okay? We are all in the same Board. And second thing is, as referendum is mentioned, every parent is, we are not happy about it, y'all are not happy, so it's no blaming game here, how we can think and solve the problem. The one thing is, from last two years, y'all have been saying that, if the referendum fails twice, we can ask state to intervene. The state intervenes and builds a very lousy, or whatever the term you say, not a good school, but you know, in Perth, Amboy, the state is building hundred and twenty-five or hundred and thirty million dollars, they are paying to build a state-of-the-art school. So we can tell, okay, intervene, come and build state-of-the-art school here. So we need not worry about this vote, no, no swayers, so let the state come, let them build it, state-of-the-art will lobby for it, so the process starts working. So let's start, go and tell the state, come and intervene, okay? So that is my request.
Thank you.
Please consider this, President Madam, okay?
Anthony Preziosi, wait a question, wait. Michael, can you tell me when I have one minute left, please? On the budget presentation, it says, continue to develop whole child expanding cultural awareness. Did you know that Governor Murphy signed into law a cultural awareness mandate in January for disability, gay, and lesbian, transgender cultural awareness mandate? Did you know that?
Yes.
Where's this money coming from, when you make this class and it's mandated? Did you know that they added disability in order to pass that mandate? So, this social awareness thing is being taken away from our special needs children. It's going to come out of the budget for special needs, that's why they put disability there, okay? That's one. And I think that's very unfair, but it is what it is. Maybe as far as accomplishments that you mentioned, that's great. In two thousand eighteen, we did a lot of accomplishments, and that's a great thing. But Dr. Kozak was our superintendent at that time, and we accomplished a lot, and you let him go. Not only did you let him go, it cost you to let him go. So that's the accomplishments that you made, okay? Also, maybe it's time now that the referendum failed twice, why don't you get Linda Greenstein, DeAngelo, and Benson to come over here and start talking and saying, hey, wait, all the voters that voted for us for the last ten years, they need our help. What are they, under a rock now? You don't hear from them? That they haven't been here? They got elected and they're gone. Even Bonnie Coleman said something the last time she was here about, our president is not taking care of our education system. But this is what's going on, they don't wanna fight for us, you should get them here. Thank you.
My name is Gail DePaine, I'm a new resident to Monroe, and I live in Rossmore Village. First, I, I was at one of your presentations for the referendum with the League of Women Voters, and I have to say, you did a great job putting this referendum together. I've been in your, I've been where you, people are sitting right now for eighteen years in a previous, in another district, and to have it fall down after all that you did is horrible. I went out and talked to as many, I don't wanna say I'm the senior, but I am...
Do you have a question in regard to the budget?
Yeah, I'm talking about the budget. And, but when you were talking about the referendum, I just wanna commend you on that. But the budget and the stuff that you wanna do with the state, I think you cannot do it just with Monroe. I think you have to go out to the surrounding districts in your area that are of equal pupil population and equal problems. Of course, it's not South Brunswick, but I know North Brunswick has that problem and a couple other ones. Get, not yourself, but a bunch of, of the districts together, then go after the state, then go after your representatives, and then you, I think you'll make a mark on something. I mean, with, with Presidential, with DeVos, forget it, she's, she's a waste. But you have to realize, more power, if you go out to your surrounding districts, exactly what you guys said at your presentation on the referendum, and now with your budget, you, you can't keep putting it back on yourself all the time, you've gotta really worry about your children, but so do a lot of other districts in this state. There needs to be change the way our state schools are fulfilled and budgeted. They have nothing to say to us because they don't give us anything. So, you need to go after them, I'll be there to help you if you need help. I'll be glad to be on the committee to go after the state, to give everybody the appropriate amount of money that they deserve for all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Boy, Fort Tamarack Road, I have specific questions about the budget. I noticed under the expenditure listing, there's a new library staff being added, I was wondering if Dr. Alvik could elaborate on that. So that's one of the questions. And I, I couldn't find where the cost of the trailers for the middle school is reflected in these documents, so if you could also elaborate on that, Mr. Gorski, that would be appreciated. And some years ago, the teachers started contributing to the cost of their health Once again, I don't know if, if that contribution by the teachers is reflected as a revenue source, or, I, I don't know how that's reflected in these documents that, that you provided for us. So those are my three questions. Why the need for an additional librarian? The cost of, of the portable classroom trailers, where is that reflected in the budget? Because we are, we understand that it is supposed to impact the operating budget. And then finally, where would we find, if they are, continue to do that, the contributions of the teachers toward their health care program? Thank you.
Dr. Alvik, do you have the... Okay.
So every year, I meet with the elementary school principals, and we take, before we even start the budget process, we take a look at our enrollment and the number of class sections we have at each school, and make sure our class sizes are equitable across all of the schools, across the grade levels. So we do that before we even start the budget process and plan for the projected growth. Once we do that, and we identify how many sections are in each school, then we know how many specialists we need. By specialist, I mean physical education teachers, because every class has PE twice a week, a media specialist, an art teacher, and a, a music teacher. So that, every class has five specials a week, two PE, one art, one music, one media. Once we figure that out, then we take a look at our current staff that are staffing those programs, and we figure out where we need staff, and it's like a huge puzzle. We have posters on the wall, and we figure out Barclay Brook needs thirty-two sections of PE, Oak Tree needs forty-two sections of PE, Woodland needs eighteen sections, whatever the number is. And we move staff around and play a puzzle because staff can work thirty sections a week, that's five, six per day at the elementary level, and to have a hundred percent of their contract. We've been doing this since I've been in this position, and we are at a point with the increased number of sections in our schools that we have to add some special ed, some, some special... the increased number of sections in our schools that we have to add some special area staff. That's where the media specialist is coming in. It will be shared between two schools, Oak Tree and Mill Lake, which is where our highest number of sections are. We're also adding an art teacher, and we're adding a PE teacher to cover those additional sections. So that's where those positions come from.
Mr. Gorski?
And I really would like to commend Dr. Alvich and her company for putting that together. In other words, instead of budgeting for all of the new needs for staff, which are extraordinary, based on the projected number of students, they look at every existing class in each school to determine if there's any efficiency that could be transferred over and utilized in lieu of hiring new. And it really suppresses the amount of new staff. It's most impressive, and it saves a lot of money. As far as your questions, Mr. Boye, the trailer lease payment is under instructional programs in an account called Other Purchased Services. It has the account category 11, 190, 100, 500, and it's an eclectic grouping of trailer, instructional trailer lease costs, as well as instructional downloads for media and textbooks and things of that nature. But that's where that's budgeted. And to your second question about health benefits, staff are still paying a high amount of benefit cost to the district, even with some relief attained through negotiations. In the 1920 budget, there is a offset to the appropriation for health insurance of $4.4 million, which is the calculated figure of what we call 170, Chapter 178 deductions from all staff. And that is a very difficult calculation that's performed with our broker and our HR director, Christine Christie, and it has a lot of variables, but $4.4 million is a reduction of the appropriation for health insurance. It's not an additional revenue source.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak to the budget?
Good evening. Betty Sabarito, Two Barrymore Drive. With regard to the mandate that came out in January from Governor Murphy, can you tell us where the money is coming from? Is that coming out of our special needs budget?
That, the law came out, and it's not exactly as was just stated. It is a law that requires districts in not next year's budget, the following year's budget, 2021, to provide information and awareness to students on the contributions of people with special needs and people in the LBGt community. I actually just shared this information with my supervisors last week at a supervisors' meeting, and what we will be looking at is, as we're looking at our curriculum, where can we fit it in? So it is not coming out of a special education budget. It's not a class. It's raising awareness for those groups of their, similar to what we do with March, Women's Month, February, Black History Month, similar to something like that. How can we fit that in? But it's not for the next school year budget, it's actually for the 2021 school year.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Ramraghunath, Six Oven Strive. So I want to thank Mr. Goodall, Mr. Tagg, Mr. Gorski, Ms. Kalpanovic, and some of the BOE members who really campaigned hard over the last few months presenting the referendum, patiently answered the question. I know in some cases, there were probably a couple of people showing up, but you guys were very patient. So hats off to you all, you know, A+ for the effort that you put in. Obviously, for all of us, it was an F, right, with the referendum not passing. So again, talking about the budgets, right, as you can see, we, a lot of questions opening up, not only 1920, but beyond. We know trailers are needed, right? I saw some 3.5 million run rate in the next three years, and the presentations, I may be not be completely accurate with those numbers. But in that regard, right, so we have failed twice, right? So, Madam President, can we now trigger the state to intervene and help us here? We need help desperately. We don't, we cannot afford it, it looks like in the budget. So can you go ahead and trigger the state intervention for the middle school?
The Board of Education could petition the state to come in. It would be a long process. It would be a costly process, and in the end, they could probably ask us to, or mandate us to build a state school. They will not pay for it. So I am creating an ad hoc committee. I don't know if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, for all Monroe residents to have input into what our next steps will be, whether, because we know we need a referendum, we know we need to put kids someplace, and we have to figure out something that the public will support and vote on, yes. So I think at this point, that's our next step, is to see, involve the public, see where we want to go, because that could be done much quicker than having the state come in and do their investigation.
Yeah, appreciate the feedback, but really, I don't see, even if you put on the referendum, it's not going to pass. The public has spoken. I doubt it. As a member of public requesting, really, it's like, we have failed twice, let's move fast. Looks like the state is only an option for us. So I kindly request that the board please consider that. Second point, can the board, I think Ms. Michelle Arminio raised that, about, you know, communicating to the mayor and the council about how this excessive construction growth is impacting the quality of lives of our children, the education. So would the board consider drafting a strong letter, whatever you call it, to the mayor and the council, really raising this concern in official terms on how it is impacting your budget, your ability to run the schools, and asking them to come back to you with a solution?
I think that's something that we're, we have to have a discussion with the township first, because they're doing things, they have laws they have to follow, they have mandates that we have to follow. We might not understand what they're doing and why they're doing that, and why there are all this, this communication, the, what's the word? Development of Monroe is going on. But I don't, I don't think that, the board at this point should be finger pointing to them, because we don't, we don't know what their process is that they're following.
Okay. And then third point, right, I saw the capital outlay budget. It's down 42%, right, down by 800K, right? And we know we need to be constructing, we know we have to start building for the high school. So why is it that we have, really, we are bringing down our capital outlay? And I seen, like Princeton, for example, instead of the 2% cap, they're actually going at 2.63%, right?
Well, let, Mr. Gorski, can you answer that question?
The capital outlay may appear that it's going down compared to last year, where there were more budget priorities in the capital outlay area, including things such as roofs and so on. This year, the priority was instructional busing, and still, we were able to budget for over a million dollars of vestibule projects and some other facility projects, such as bleachers. There was a, a couple machines that Mr. Tagg put in the budget. We efficiently budgeted for those items by lease purchasing, lease purchasing many of them, so you don't see them in the capital outlay account. They are in the facility section 1100261, because they're being financed over a five-year period. So it could be a little misleading to see a decrease in the capital outlay account. But I will say this, we have done a Herculean job of addressing your investments as a community in your facilities, every year through the budget, by no less than $2 to $3 million a year. And that's within cap, and it's been a challenge for us. We don't go out to bond for construction repair projects, such as roofs and windows and security projects, like are commonplace now. We do it every year in the budget.
Thank you.
Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. I had a question on the budget presentation. It was said that there is a spending freeze as of January that equates to about $900,000. Is that correct? How much is the spending freeze? Yes.
Jan, approximately January 15th, the superintendent of schools directed all staff to institute a non-essential purchase order freeze, and that's for anything that's not contractually or otherwise obligated to be an appropriation. So anything that was non-essential spending was frozen, and based on previous year's numbers, that total is approximately $900,000 of savings of non-essential spending from January through June 30.
So where does that money go to?
The money goes to meet the obligations of growth in the district, and also could, in theory, add to the excess surplus calculation each year, which is the savings that carries over from budgets to budget, and as we presented, was actually depleted by a million dollars from last year in the 1920 budget.
So then that's replenished, so we'll have about a million dollars in surplus? Is that what we're saying?
It will contribute. There's many items that contribute to surplus. Maximizing revenues beyond what was budgeted contributes to surplus. Cutting appropriations through purchase order frees and purchasing consortiums and transportation jointures all contributes to surplus. That is management's hands in suppressing taxes and keeping dollars in the classroom while being efficient.
Sure, and I guess that's my point. If we have, if we're able to have a spending freeze that equates to almost a million dollars, which is cost of trailers going forward, maybe we look more carefully at our budget. If we have a million dollars that we can cut right now out of our budget and not spend on non-essential, well then maybe that million dollars in the budget should have gone to something more essential, like, you know, it could go in the future then to trailers. Maybe we need to be more diligent with the budgets. If we have a million dollars in there of non-essential items that, as of January, you got half of September, October, November, December, four months of school, and, you know, you got six more months, and we don't need that million dollars, you need to look more carefully at that as you're budgeting. And just going back to what Ram said, there are districts that do go above cap. We can go above cap. You decided as a board years ago to stop going out to the public and asking for the public to vote on the budget. We can go back to that. If we need to go over to 2.5%, we can do that. You can do that. It's not a law that you cannot, that you have to stay under the 2%. It can go out to the voters, and the voters can decide whether or not to go over cap or not. So that's important to note as we move forward. Before we start cutting essential programs and making cuts because of our growth, we should look at going back to the voters to vote on the budget if we need to go over the 2%.
My name is Suresh Kumar. I had the benefit of working in the corporate sector, and currently I'm in the education sector. I'm a professor at NJID. So I'm just kind of wanted to revisit one important concept, and it's not directly related to the budget, but I think it's important, it plays a role. So if you can indulge me for a couple of minutes, the important concept is to understand the role of the board of, how you understand the role of the Board of Education, which is similar to the Board of Directors that a company has. So basically, it is governance and oversight being the two important things. On, in the company side, for example, the customers are the people who pay for the service. In the case of education, there are two elements to this. One is the users, which is the students, and the second is we, the taxpayers who actually pay for it. So you have two elements of customers. So I'm just wanting to put together a few recommendations based on all the experience that we have had over the last few, I would say, years, referendum process, et cetera. One is, and I was happy to hear Michelle speak about it, which is to take the customer feedback before and during the process, not after the process. I think that's what happened in the referendum, although you did a great job, but the feedback was listened to but not acted upon, because it was already planned. So I would encourage that. I would encourage greater transparency of the BOD deliberations. Customers obviously have a right to know everything. One thing I would recommend is if you could move this public forum to the front of a meeting, you can understand how difficult it is for all of us who are going to a job, coming back looking after our kids, then sitting here until 10:00 PM for a public forum. If you can move that maybe towards a little bit earlier, that would really make it really Finally, there has been some comments about some political pressures happening, at least in the past. I hope that we will keep it separate so that that would not interfere with, that in terms of decision-making, it should always be in the interest of the kids. And the only final thing would be that, how do we make decisions faster? I think few of the recommendations was about how do we move forward quicker? Can we push the envelope a little bit more, given the state we are in? Hold people responsible. So these are recommendations hopefully you will take into consideration as you move forward.
Thank you. Any more people for the budget? This is for the budget.
Krishna Ekali, Levin Jake Place. I'm specific to the budget.
Can you hear me now? Right.
Krishna Ekali, Levin Jake Place. If you look at the, on the first page of C, the, it says the textbooks cost has gone down, no, it's, yeah, the textbooks have gone down. Is there a particular reason why the cost of textbooks have gone down this year?
Mr. Gorski?
I'm going to ask the gentleman to please repeat. What line item did you have a question on?
It says textbooks have gone down, no, it's not the textbooks, or it's the other objects that have gone down from 449,000. It's on the first page of C. Yeah, there's a 37% drop on that.
Yes, yes. If I recall correctly, last year, there were many additional textbook adoptions that come up on the cycle that Dr. Alvich can speak of. The textbooks are on a five-year cycle where they have to be studied by the curriculum committee and refreshed. This year, we have many new adoptions that I would encourage Dr. Alvich to talk about if you wish, that are in here. And like many of the assets that are being purchased by our facilities department, we are now engaging in the leasing of textbooks through the textbook companies, where we match the cost of the addition over the usefulness of the books.
So in the past couple of years, we've adopted more textbooks than we needed to adopt this year. That's basically the answer. So we've, in the last couple of years, we've gotten social studies books, we've gotten math books, and what we're doing is working with the companies to get a 0% three-year payment plan, and the books will actually last six or seven years, based on the licenses that we get for the online version. So in the last couple of years, we've needed more new purchases, where this year, we're only purchasing a new social studies K-5 book.
Got it.
So that's why you see a decrease in this year's version. As Mr. Gorski mentioned earlier, we start with a zero-based budget, so we don't just look, okay, last year, we spent this much on textbooks, so next year, we're going to spend 2% more. We really look at our needs. Every supervisor has a five-year cycle that they look at all their resources and review all of their resources before we come to the budget table.
Right. And there's a lot of talk that has gone on about the need of trailers at multiple facilities in 2021, not this year or the year after. And I would be, as a corporate person, right, if I had to cut something out, I would cut something which is non-essential. Our core business, our, BOE is responsible for educating the children to the best abilities, a thorough and efficient education. So anything that has AP classes or honors classes, I would plead with you to keep them and cut out non-essential services. That's the second point I wanted to make. We're being realistic here, we are where we are now, but if we have to cut out, let's look at non-essential services first.
Thank you.
Right. And third thing is-
And that's for next year.
Yeah, agreed. And the third thing is, there was a discussion about shared services, right, where we could share our services with other communities and everything else. Looking casually at the Millstone Middle School, they seem to be under-admitted for the middle school. They have a admission of about 500 versus 1,500. Can we evaluate if we can send our children there, or am I off target?
Madam?
Yes.
Last year- Last year, maybe it's two years ago now, Mr. Tagg, Facilities Director, and I actually did reach out to, I believe it was Millstone, because we were presented with information that they had an empty school. And we spoke to the business administrator there, who said that is not the case. They built a new school. It's one of the most occupied ones that they're proud of. They have no school to lease or assist us with. But it's a creative thought, and I thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Edelman. I'm at Forty-Eight Cherry Blossom. I did vote for the referendum, and I was disappointed that it did not pass. One of the biggest comments I got from, you know, all my neighbors and coworkers and other parents that I spoke to all said, oh, don't worry about it. The state will come in, they'll build another school anyway. That literally was the biggest comment that I got from anybody that I talked to. From hearing from you guys, from you all tonight, it doesn't seem like that's an automatic thing that happens. And I'm just kind of wondering what that process is and what that looks like. Because that seems to me to have been the consensus, that all, you know, all these other parents thought, oh, the state will just come in and they'll build another school.
Mr. Gorski?
Madam, Mr. Goodall, Dr. Alvek, Mr. Tagg, and I talked about this at length at every one of our presentations. In fact, if I recall correctly, we may even have a slide on it, but the process, as defined by our board attorney, who researched this, is when a school district has two consecutive defeats, they can appeal to the state for relief. The state will come in, they'll look at much of the information we presented with our budget presentation, such as your enrollment current, your enrollment projections, your facility limitations, and the state could determine that it's in their interest to provide a thorough and efficient education, and then there is a need to override the voters and approve the projects. In very rare instances, the state can also contribute funds toward the project. Now, Freehold Borough is one of these instances that made the papers. Freehold Borough is very dissimilar to Monroe. They are a failing, they have failing schools, they are not meeting thorough and efficient, and they had students literally being taught in the hallways. The state came in and saw that and said, this is a recipe for disaster. We are approving your referendum despite the voters defeating it twice. And then Freehold Borough further appealed and said, thank you for doing so. We just want to point out, too, that we don't have the revenues in terms of tax levies that are sustainable to raise the levy in order to pay the debt service on the referendum. The state came in, reviewed the circumstance, determined that it was factual, and paid for eighty-five percent of the project. Monroe is not at all similar to that situation. We are over adequacy. We are more than meeting the thorough and efficient standard. And if the state was to come in, they would approve a school, and we believe the evidence could be there to do so, but it would be only on approved state costs. Now, what's the difference? Parking lots, athletic fields, performing arts centers, classrooms for non-mandated programs such as AP are not approved costs. So they would cut those out, and you would get a bare-bones school that would not look anything similar to your other schools here in Monroe. And we would not have parity with programs or services, and it would not make this community proud whatsoever. And most importantly, the state would not contribute a nickel to the project, because Monroe has very high income numbers and very high property ratables.
No, I understand that. Thank you for your clarification on that. My only further question is, would the state coming in have to be something that the school board would ask them to do? What would the chance be that they would come in on their own? Is that something down the road, or is that like an imminent type of-
No. Good question. It's not an automatic. The school district would have to engage in a legal appeal to the state and engage in a lengthy, expensive legal process and provide much information to the state, attorney to attorney, in order to get this process going. It's not something administrative can do, and it's not something that's automatic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ira Nelson, Eighty-Seventh Crescent Way. We've had two referendums that have come and have failed. What has the cost been to the district for these referendums? We, I know there was a lot of planning going on about a year ago, there were a lot of presentations. I don't know if engineers, architects have been hired. Do we have a cost total of what this, the expenditures have been for this?
Mr. Gorski?
Some of the expenditures through architectural design with the schematic presentations that we presented were covered under the architect's contract. So there were certain costs, and they are not the majority of what you would think, that were paid to the architect for basic designs of schematics. Most of the architect's time is just an accrual for the ultimate project's success, in which case it comes from their contract. It's kind of like they have an interest in getting this through, because they have a large amount of time that's deferred until it's successful. Unfortunately, it's going to be deferred longer. The real cost to the district, sir, is the increased construction cost, increase in interest rates, trailer release payments, because the need for these schools and these additional seats is not abated by the referendum defeat. These aren't luxury items. We've defined the need, and that was without question. So that still remains, and the cost to address those is escalating.
But you really haven't answered the question.
Be more specific.
You, in other words, we've had engineer reports. We've found property that went to eminent domain. Time has been spent on this. Isn't there a cost total for this?
Well, you asked a school district's perspective. The land was acquired by the township. I believe it was three-and-a-half million. I'm going by memory.
I thought it was three. Did it go over?
It was three. I could be wrong. Three, I beg your pardon, it was three. And so that was a township expense. Yes, that is going to be borne by the taxpayers. The school district had to pay for the election cost. That's about seventy grand an election.
For both, both referendums?
Each one.
Each one was seventy thousand dollars, for the poll workers and all that stuff.
So it's starting to total up?
Yes.
And we have nothing to show for it? Okay. Interesting.
Because we have a resolution that is on the agenda that we haven't voted for, I'm asking only questions in regard to the budget. Referendum questions will be later in the program, but right now, we have a budget question on the floor. So only questions from the public in regard to the budget. So if there's no more questions, we'll close public forum, and we'll have a roll call on the resolution for, to accept the budget. The nineteen-twenty preliminary budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-twenty.
No, it's nineteen, oh, twenty, twenty, what is it?
Nineteen, nineteen-twenty.
Nineteen-twenty?
No, not nineteen-twenty. Twenty-nineteen.
Nineteen-twenty preliminary budget.
School year nineteen.
That's what I, did I say that? I thought I said that.
Roll call for the adoption of the nineteen slash twenty-
Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget?
Per the resolution I read into the record a few minutes ago. Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Plori?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
With the hopes of looking at some things, I'm going to vote no, hope for it to be changed.
Recorded as a no, thank you. Mrs. Dimeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Coloponim?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. So we're on to our student board member reports this evening. I hope you thought that budget presentation was very exciting.
Very exciting. MTHS Unified Basketball Team made history on Saturday, March second, by winning the first-ever Unified B Bracket NJSIAA State Championship. The Monarch Township High School Cheer Team made state champions and are currently in Orlando, Florida, competing nationally. The Boys Bowling Team won the state sectional championship. The National English Honor Society went to Barclay Brook to read to K through twelve students, K through two students, for Read Across America. Lastly, Monarch Township High School Zeca made a successful state conference with thirty-one finalists, twenty-one of which are eligible to compete at that international conference, a state scholarship winner, and a new state officer. This is the largest amount of success in chapter history.
Okay, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the elementary schools. So the Applegarth PTA is holding a book fair in school available to students during the school day on March twenty-first and this is twenty-second. And next month, they're also organizing the Tenth Annual Oak Tree Applegarth Trick Tray, which is actually a premium dinner in the Forest Gate Country Club, and the theme this year is Adventures in Wonderland. Barclay Brook is having an assembly on March twenty-second called the Science Circus, which is a STEM-based comedy show that teaches children to embrace science from a young age. And from the high school, there's a college fair for sophomores and juniors in the auxiliary gym on March twenty-first for sophomores and juniors, and more than one hundred representatives from different colleges and schools will be available for students to talk to. And finally, on March twentieth to twenty-second, this Wednesday or Friday, a group of FPLA members will be attending the FPLA State Leadership Conference in Atlantic City. Around ninety-five members, they'll be competing for advancing to nationals, business opportunities, and scholarships.
Thank you. Did you have a question, Mr. Ryback? Okay. At this time, we'll go to committee reports. Mr. Chiarella?
All right, I'll be, I'll be quick. On March twelfth, we had a Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee meeting. We had, we had Mr. Eric Goring from Middlesex County Parks Department presented, he came in and presented the maps of the committee of the walking trails that would go, that go through the park and then through the middle school and the high school. He brought signs and-
Thank you.
Thank you. And colored markers and things like that, and maps, and he laid out a plan for those walking trail, trails which go through our school property. The committee, although they were, we were very supportive of the idea, asked that Mr. Gorski go back to our insurance broker and take a look at that and see if there are any concerns with having the public on our property, and then see if we can get maybe a hold harmless agreement from the county. And then if we could do that, then we're more than willing to move forward with that. So we just wanted to make sure that we had some things in place. We also, Mr. Gorski informed us about the death of our mail truck. So it's a two thousand and five mail truck, and it's dead, it's gone, so-
He said passing, he didn't say dead.
Passing, he did say, he did say passing. I embellished death, dead. But it's incapacitated, has it? But anyway, the committee is asking the full board to replace that with a transit van. We need that mail truck. The mail truck's very important to the district. It moves a lot of mail, and without it, we would be in trouble. So that's on our agenda. And then we had a very good presentation, question and answer session, I guess, by Kathleen McDonald. So she's our Director of Transportation, and she came in and reviewed some of the new things that we have going on, and some of them are older, maybe a year old, that we approved last year. For instance, the GPS system, the new software, the routing systems, and some of the things that she's worked on. So I can tell you that, from my perspective anyway, and I think I could speak for our committee, Buildings and Grounds Committee, she does a great job. So, and I think for anybody out there who lives on a main artery, main road, five-twenty-two, Applegarth Road, and has their children getting on and off buses, prior to Mrs. McDonald doing her magic, and I call it magic, because she actually, we learned, creates those routes herself. So even though she has the software to help her, she maps out those routes and writes them and figures them out. So I could tell you that I live on a main road, and prior, you know, prior to this, my kids would have to cross a major highway, which is crazy with the amount of people that don't stop for buses. It's just dangerous. Well, then, last year, I started noticing that the bus was coming on the other side, both to pick up and drop off. And that's not because I'm a board member, because we did, for years, we had it the other way, and I've been a board member for a long time. It's because of the way she routed it. And when I brought that up to her at our meeting, she said that that has been done all over town, that they made a concerted effort to do that, because the safety of the children are, you know, it's so important. So I want to commend her for that. But anyway, she went through that stuff with us, talked about where we are with our own bus fleet, and how we're moving ahead with getting as many buses as we possibly can of our own, as I mentioned earlier. So anyway, great update, and I was happy to see, happy to hear from her, and happy to see what she was doing. And I think that, I think we're well-served with Kathleen McDonald. Now, the last thing that I have is a Monroe Commons lease agreement. So Mr. Gorski presented the lease agreement to us on behalf of Mary Smith and the board attorney. We, because of space constraints, we used to have pupil personnel services in Applegarth in trailers. And we ran out of space when we got rid of the trailers, so we moved them off-site, and we've been renting a storefront, really. I mean, it's a couple stores together, and that has served as well. With going into our meeting on the twelfth, we didn't know where we were going, we didn't know the results of the referendum yet, obviously. So we had hedged our bets, and that's what we're bringing to you today, is just that we want to continue that lease. So we would have had to have continued that lease anyway, even if the referendum passed, because the schools aren't built yet. But we had hoped that if we had a passing of the referendum, we'd be able to bring pupil personnel services back into the schools themselves and then not have that additional cost of the rentals. So I'm also, our committee's also asking that we move forward with that lease agreement for the next three years.
That is a five-year lease agreement, isn't it?
Is it five?
I thought we had said three if the referendum didn't pass, three if the referendum passed, and five if it didn't pass. If I-
Madam? I believe Mrs. Smith's negotiating a three-year lease to give us the most advantageous price, but there are options that the district could go further, but the core of it's a three-year lease.
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Ryback?
Thank you. First, I'd just like to mention that I'm very glad that the Personnel Committee saw fit to bring before you today for your consideration in improvement in the substitute pay. I think that's a winning situation for everyone. Next, I'm, as you know, a member of the New Jersey School Board Legislative Committee. We had a meeting about two weeks ago, and one of the things that was brought to our attention, that committee feels will really have a lot of legs, is legislation called Every Child Counts, since before the legislature now. I'd just like to touch some of the highlights of it, because it does impact some of the conversations we've had today. One, it would eliminate the census approach, so school districts are funded based on their exact number of special education students instead of the state average. It would restore the special ed tiers with the task force to set the appropriate funding amounts for the various needs. Make special education one-hundred percent categorical instead of the one-third categorical and two-thirds wealth equalized. Commit to fully funding extraordinary special education. It would amend the state constitution to ensure that the statutory school funding formula is followed every year, even if it's on a prorated basis, dependent upon how much school aid can be afforded within the state budget each year. Would eliminate one-day enrollment numbers for state aid calculations and move to an average annual enrollment. Finally, it would use the federal small area income and poverty estimate currently used for Title I funding as the measure of at-risk instead of self-reported and easily manipulated free reduced lunch numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryback. Mr. Mayo? We'll go around the table.
Okay. We had a curriculum meeting today. The supervisors prevented. We, next, we have a new curriculum document for probability and statistics. It's an elective course for those who have successfully completed Algebra II. This class is taught through a variety of projects, performance lab, case studies, analysis of data, in addition to quizzes and tests. It's an introductory course to the basics of probability and statistics, and it's designed for those students interested in pursuing a career in business, marketing, psychology, mathematics, or- in business, marketing, psychology, mathematics, or any field requiring data analysis. Some of the topics in this course are graphical techniques, analysis of data, probability, permutations, combinations, the binomial distribution, the normal curve, random sampling, central limit theorem, hypothesis testing, and the linear correlation and regression. The final end-of-year project is a carnival fair, which is open to students during lunch break. This is where the kids in the class create games, knowing the probability and statistics of the games they create for the kids visiting to play. We also talked about a I-Lit pilot. This is a, for special needs students in high school in the resource room, and it's for reading. It's a supplemental program to complement their, the student's current curriculum. We have found through map testing that there are gaps in these students' reading ability, and this will help them get to their individual goals. We also discussed the summer reading. Soon, you will be getting letters and suggested titles for all incoming students in grades one through twelve. The titles reflect the concept of window and mirrors and thereby appeal to interest, genre, preference, race, ethnicities, genders, and reading levels. There are links for the resources for the parents to review the books. We also had a discussion about the restructuring of world language in grade seven, eight, and nine. We are implementing a civics class at the middle school, and as a result, it's a half-year class. And as a result, we have to configure the world language classes in grade seven and eight. Grade seven, the civics class is for grade seven. They will have a half-year of world language and a half-year of civics. As a result, the eighth-grade curriculum will be, need to be revisited because the seventh grade will only be getting half a year of world language. And then the ninth-grade curriculum will also need to be revisited as a result of changes to the seventh-grade curriculum. We're hoping by, by tenth grade, things will equalize out. But Dory and her supervisors will keep an eye on this to make sure things are going as they should. We also talked about a Performing Arts Academy, which is a summer program which will be presented by the Monroe Township High School Chorus Program. The objective is to provide current and aspiring artists specifically within the, within the content area of bands, chorus, musical theater, and orchestra, and with a forum to maintain and develop their individual skills, ensemble skills, and overall musicianship. The target audience is students entering grades four through ninth. There will be volunteers from the Music Honor Society Band and Chorus and the high school and middle school band and chorus programs. The different sessions they're offering is the Monroe Township Summer Chorus Program, the musical, there's a musical theater camp, there's a summer band program, there's a junior jazz academy, there's an intermediate jazz academy, there's a percussion academy, and there's an orchestra academy for kids who are studying strings. So, this is new to our district, which is really exciting. I've asked Zach about strings before, but we're bringing it through the Performing Arts Academy. And these will be in the summer. So, they're paid sessions, there's weeks, they go from July twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, July twenty-ninth to August second, and August fifth through August ninth. So, this is something that parents can sign their kids up for. And that's it.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to this side. Mr. Rutske?
So, in, for the Finance Committee, in light of the budget presentation tonight, I would say that at our finance meeting, we reviewed the budget. And I would just respectfully say I wanted to thank Ms. Dr. Alvik, Mr. Goodall, Mr. Gorski for putting together a wonderfully responsible and incredibly creative budget. Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Polari?
I wish I could top that report. Good evening, everyone. Just to build upon what Ms. DiMeo talked about, the, some of the programs we're planning to introduce in the summer, we had a very good presentation by, by Zach Morolda at the Education Advocacy Committee. And he indicated that there are a couple of, a handful of courses that are being taught in the past, materials and methods, introduction to engineering design, cabinet making, and construction technology. And thank you very much. It looks like there's a long waiting list for people to, to enroll in this as well because of the constraints that they have. And also, there's a feeling that these are mostly male-dominated items. So, they wanted to introduce a little bit more oriented towards the things that Mrs. DiMeo just talked about, such as fashion design, cosmetology, and, and things of that nature. And basically, these are all geared towards people who are non-college-bound in the future. So, irrespective of the, of the referendum, we at the BOE continue to see how we can introduce more programs. And also, we're looking at possibility of raising any funds through these courses in the summer as well. So, coming back to some of the interactions with the elected officials, I had a conversation with the Assembly Speaker, Craig Coughlin. And he said that the funding formula changes to take place in this year. It's not gonna happen, so that's a non-starter from their perspective. We had at least two or three meetings with Assemblyman Dan Benson. We had a conference call with the district staff along with the Vice Chair of this committee. And we understand that some of the public also met with him in the past. We're looking at various avenues. We are looking to sue the state. I don't want to promise too much and deliver, overpromise and underdeliver. But we want to first explore the possibility of, is there a reasonable cause, including some of the suggestions made that are today, to see, we most likely will engage a reputed law firm to, to advise us on this. Because what we don't want to do is spend a six-figure fee in, in legal battle at the end of the day, only to be ridiculed for, for suing the state. I know there's a lot of discussion in the public about suing along with the eight other districts that are suing the state. People need to realize the fact that the reason they're suing is because their money is being taken away. Whereas Monroe Township, we actually gained some money, so the, the reasons are different. So, we can't possibly harp on that particular one. But I like the idea of looking for similar municipalities that are having similar issues like us and kind of coming together to sue. As many of you know, although the budget, the draft budget has been announced by the governor, there's going to be a lot of finagling that takes place between February and June. I request everybody, I know Ken and Steve said that it's on my shoulders. I don't have such broad shoulders, unfortunately. I need, we need everybody's help, and we are all in this together, like you said. Is to go to the State House and make sure that we talk to the elected officials. We are, from the Board of Education, trying to get some slots to give a testimony, both in front of the State Senate hearing for the budget and as well as for the Assembly Budget Hearings. I've been in touch with both the legislators that we have right now. So, like we received one-point-six million additional funding last year, that's what we need to focus right now for the immediate purpose, to see if we can get something like Lakewood God. But the Lakewood's problems are slightly different than ours, so to speak. So, let me just make sure that I'm not missing anything. I believe that's it. We, we are looking at a couple of other items, like the Department of Educational Reserve Funds. And Mr. Gorski identified, as a matter of fact, senior supplemental stabilization aide that would give districts that have fifty percent of the population over sixty-five years or older about five-hundred dollars per student, which would enable us to get about three-and-a-half million dollars. We'll take anything we can get. So, we're gonna look at all these options, working with the, with the community as well as the other board members. Thank you, Madam President.
Do we have anything?
Yes, I do.
Yes, okay.
So, thank you very much for reminding me. In terms of the impact fee, we did draft a resolution, which I had it a second ago here. I'm gonna read this. It was a resolution of the Monroe Township Board of Education calling for the New Jersey Legislature to pass legalization permitting municipalities to impose impact fees for increased school costs on developers of new residential units. Whereas, New Jersey law prohibits municipalities from charging impact fees to offset costs associated with increased demands on schools, leaving the financial burden to be borne by the local taxpayers. And whereas, over the last several decades, the Monroe Township, the township of Monroe, like many municipalities, has experienced residential development due to, due in large part to the excellent quality of life, geographic location, and superior public school system. And whereas, Monroe Township is required by the state to accommodate eight-hundred-and-fifty new affordable housing units and several thousand market units as a part of the fair share, fair, fair house, share settlement. And whereas, this experience is, is occurring in municipalities across the state, and demand for new school services increases. And whereas, it is fair and reasonable to shift some of the financial effects of residential development on local public schools from the taxpayers to the developers whose projects clearly and directly create the need for additional funding. Now, therefore be resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education urges the New Jersey Legislature to pass legislation permitting municipalities to enact ordinances imposing impact fee for necessary public school improvements and expansion on the developers who build the new housing in their communities. Be it further resolved that the copies of the resolution be mailed to the Senate President Steve Sweeney, Senate Minority Leader Tom Kane, and Speaker Craig Coughlin, and Assembly Minority Leader John Bromnik, dated March eighteenth, twenty nineteen.
Is there a second? Is that the second by Mrs. Lang? Comments or questions by members of the board? Mrs. Arminio?
Yes, I would ask Mr. Polari to add something, an addendum to that by something that we both experienced last, at the last Planning Board meeting. The, I would ask that the Legislature reevaluate or, or actually get rid of the demographics the way the builders, and I don't know, you know, specific language, we can simplify it. But the builders are using debunked formulas to tell, in their applications, about how many students will come out from a, an application. And we went the Rutgers, the Rutgers formula from two thousand. And Mr. Ryback was among some people, along with Linda Greenstein. And I'm, I'm actually quite surprised that after her taking us to the Blaustein business, where the gentleman who actually promulgated the formula said that it wasn't, it, it didn't work anymore. So, I would like some kind of addition to that. Have the Legislature not allow that formula to be used during applications. Because it doesn't work, it doesn't, and it's, it's giving us a false, a false, false... No, not just, it's a, a false number. The number is not false. They said for two-hundred-and-thirteen townhouses, market-rate townhouses, there would only be twenty-three children. That's absurd. And, and we are suffering for that. And it is, it is inappropriate and, I mean, the, the information is incorrect. How could the Legislature allow it, and how could our local officials allow it? I mean, we even got the Chair of the Planning Board to admit that that formula doesn't work. So, we shouldn't, that should be an addendum to that resolution, please. It's significant for us.
Point of correction, I believe that the Department of Education has removed the Rutgers method from the enrollment projections. And I, and I, and I believe that it also has been removed from the municipal submissions that you were referring to. I could say that none of our applications to the state use the Rutgers method any longer for the last two referendum attempts.
Well, I can tell you that the last Planning Board meeting, the applicant absolutely used that formula and suggested that it was acceptable, that it was accepted by the state. So, he is under oath to tell the truth and give accurate information. So, we have to figure out what's going on.
Mr. Ryback?
I just wanted to say, along the lines of what Mrs. Arminio brought up correctly, that I remember when the development on Mount Mills Road called Monroe Park, when that application first went in, it wasn't called Mount Mills, it wasn't called Monroe Park, something else. But it was like five-hundred-and-twenty-some-odd units, and the developer said it would, it would yield eighty, eighty-one students. At which point, I think we all went a little crazy there, because it's ridiculous. And, and we can't allow that Rutgers survey to continue being used, it's, it's ridiculous. Along those lines, though, I'd like to say, as far as impact fees, I certainly support it. But, you know, what I'm gonna say sounds a little pie in the sky. But I ask you to bear with me a little bit. Wouldn't it be wonderful if the state and the courts, because they're just as guilty of it, they don't take into account the impacts on, on education. But wouldn't it be wonderful if they got together and allowed us to make impact fees for the developments that are going up here now retroactive, where they could say... I know you're smiling, it's not gonna happen, but, but where they could say...
I heard there's a four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar lottery ticket.
Yes, but wouldn't it be wonderful if they could say to us in town, no, you know, you have to sit down with these developers, developers have to sit down with you, and work out some kind of contribution. Well, you know, I said it's pie in the sky, but it's only pie in the sky until it's not pie in the sky, until it becomes reality. I mean, a lot of things in, in history have been considered pie in the sky. And now, they're reality. Cars would probably laugh at years ago, and now we all have them. So, you know, I, I think that has to be done, and if, if we could stop construction while this is being done, I think that would be a benefit. Or slow construction and force these developers to sit down and work something out with us. But that would require a whole community effort, where everybody who's here today, who's listening, all of us have to really write our representatives and let them know, you know, how we feel and how, how difficult it is for us now in the school system.
Mr. Ryback, there, there are a couple of items here. In, in, in any kind of projections, there are standards that are set. The standards are typically set either statewide or nationally. And in this particular case, the Rutgers study is focused on New Jersey, and they come up with the standards based on that. So, if you build a residential unit in Sussex County or Gloucester County versus you build in, in Middlesex County, the projections are the same. What we should be doing, and what I advocate that we do, is we engage Ross Harbor and have him look at the two-bedroom townhouses for age-targeted units that were built. That's what they call them, age-targeted. And compare apples to apples. So, if you build them in our community with the same exact parameters, how many school-going kids a two-hundred-unit development is sending? I think that's what we need to do, and then take that back to the Planning Board to show them. I wanted knowing on, on the application, but I could not say that you are wrong because we didn't have the data to back up to it. So, I think that's the first thing to do. And, and the second thing, you, you talked about the...
I talked about a lot of things.
A lot of things, about the impact funding as well, doing it retroactive. I don't...
I know, I said that, it's pie in the sky. But you know what, at this point, we're really desperate, and, and we have to do something. And if that's what we have to ask, well, let's ask, what they can say is no.
So, I, I think one of the, the bigger, bigger bones that I have is, you know, having the affordable housing mandate is one thing. But requiring that for every affordable housing unit, you can build four market rates, what is really killing us. I think that's also an arbitrary number that's, that's brought up by a judge. I'm not sure how much of legality or rationale is behind it. And I think that's something that we should be looking at. And that's the question I asked of the Planning Board, and we were told that pretty much most of the development that is supposed to take place to accommodate the affordable housing, I would guess about seventy to eighty percent of it is already in place, so...
You know, the bottom line, I just want to make one comment, is, is, is money. Well, if the governor can find fifteen additional million dollars to give Lakewood for transportation, that's not in the school funding formula. Don't tell me that the state has no money to help Monroe.
Thank you.
Mr. Tofano?
Andy, I would also like to see you add a, a letter in there to our mayor and ask that he enact a moratorium on the building until the school district can catch up to its responsibility to educate all students coming into the district properly. I think that we're, we're, we're asking the taxpayers to come out and vote for this referendum because we all really know that we need it. But also, the taxpayers are voting down our referendum because they're very angry at the constant, constant, you know, being ignored constantly when they come to these meetings and say they don't, they don't want any more building. The infrastructure's not able to sustain it, the schools... The infrastructure is not able to sustain it, the schools are not able to sustain it and, and sustain it, and, and he's not listening. So I think if the board, or we send him a request to issue a moratorium, which is not stopping all the building permanently, but putting a temporary halt on it until we can catch up to give all these students the education they deserve properly, I think that, that would help.
I, I just want to bring it back to what this resolution is all about. This is about the impact fee only, not about the, the schoolchildren projections, which I'm not disagreeing with either one of you. I think it can be something that can be looked at.
That would be a separate letter. This is going to, this is not going to the township.
No, this is actually going to the legislators.
Right, right. So that's what we're voting for, we're voting on.
So are you, are you just, you're refusing my request to put an addendum on that?
I, I would need to consult with the attorney to find out if we're talking about the same topic or...
Yeah, did you have a, a comment?
Yeah, I just, I'm going to, I'm going to support your, your motion, Mr. Polari, because I know it's well-placed. I just want to say unfortunately that it's too late. You know, everything that's already built is, or approved is in the works. By the time the state gets around, the, the state, trust me, maybe, maybe it'll be the next election cycle after this one, they will get around to doing it, but it'll be too late. It'll be after we're built out, and then they're going to come in and say, look what we're doing, we're, we're, we're doing these things, and, and we're going to put, we're going to demand impact fees. But that's after the faucet turns off from all the developers and all the, all the money that comes in from those developers and from special services and things like that. So I, I know, I know it's well-placed, and I'm going to support it. But I'd like to, I'd also like to say and address your point, which was perfect, on the, on the, on the market rate versus the affordable housing, one for four. And the judge who, who presided over the affordable housing obligation is now, is now retired and working for JSM. And that says it all. JSM is the developer who's developing on 522 and then out on 33. So that four to one, that ratio was, I think anyway, created for developers. And I think that one of the things that we might want to look at from a lawsuit perspective is that. Because South Brunswick, I think, was, I don't know what happened with their litigation, but they were looking at suing also because of, because of the relationship between the judge and, and the, and the developer. And I think that might be something that we could look at also. That's it.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to have a roll call on supporting this letter of impact fees to our legislators.
Mr. Chierelli?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
I'd like to vote yes, with the condition that we sit down and, and see what we could add to that letter.
No, we're just voting on that letter the way it is.
All right, so yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mrs. Colbon?
Yes.
Madam Board President, I'm pleased to say the motion passed unanimously.
If we want to write other letters, we'll bring it to Mr. Polari's committee, and we'll work it through that way. But at this time, we, we have to get through...
Well, may I, will Mr. Polari have a conflict since he's on the planning board if, if I address resolutions specifically the planning board and township council?
We would have to ask Mary Smith.
I'm a Board of Education member also.
But you're also...
Well, it's two separate entities.
Entities, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know that there is a, yeah, but we will ask our board attorney. So I think, oh, Mrs., I know, I'm so sorry. Last but not least, Mrs. Lang.
Hello. No. So we had our policy meeting on March 12th, and once again, our policy committee is working very wonderfully together. We have quite a few mandated policies that we are going to put up for first read tonight. And the important thing to keep in mind with mandated policies is that despite what we might feel personally and what we want to do, mandated policies are basically law. And when we take our oath of office as board members, it's to uphold the laws of the state of New Jersey. So we need to continue to pass policies that are mandated and support them. Also, I think tonight was a great, great example of what a true Board of Education meeting is. A Board of Education meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public. It is not a public meeting. It is for the purpose of us to conduct our business with the public observing us. So we have one meeting a month in which to do this. And I know as a resident, when I would come to the microphone, I would get very frustrated with having to wait to get to talk. I remember staying one board meeting until I think it was 1:00 in the morning to, to speak, and I spoke. And I think I, you know, and so I think it's really important to know that we follow a format for our conduct of board meetings that is given to us basically by New Jersey school boards. This is the recommended, there's, we've looked at why we can't change it and what happens if you do change it. So I think that's just an important part for us to be aware of. So tonight, when we do our conduct of the, of board meeting bylaw, 0164, the one thing that we did add is that we recognize that what, the biggest role of the Board of Education is to always meet the needs of our students, and we're supposed to be celebrating student achievement at every meeting. So we have asked to have added to our conduct of board meetings a spot for our Assistant Superintendent Director Curriculum to give us more information about the great things that are going on in the district. So that's pretty exciting, I think. And then finally, during the referendum presentations, we had a lot of questions about the eligibility of non-resident students. And in fact, this is a mandated policy that we're about to present for first reading tonight. And what happens is that pursuant to federal and state law, the Board of Ed is required to provide all children in the district with equal access to public education. We can't pick and choose, we can't, we are prohibited from implementing any discriminatory enrollment practices, either intentionally or unintentionally. We can't, that might just exclude children from enrolling in schools. New Jersey law prohibits school districts from making enrollment contingent upon the receipt of certain documents. So we are allowed to use a driver's license, we're not, no, I take that back. We cannot use income tax returns, we cannot use citizenship papers, immigration status, we cannot use social security. So what we do when enrolling a student into the district, we look at utility bills and lease agreements. So, and even at that, we can't deny enrollment based on failure to provide a particular form or subset of documents. We also, during the process of doing the referendum, we had a lot of people talking about homes with multi-families in them. So back a couple of years ago, the district did a study on how many residents, and it was determined through this study that homes with three students per residence accounted for only 8% of our student population, and homes with four or more students per residence accounted only for .08%. We really don't have a problem of having multiple families sending children to school. We have a lot of multi-generational families, but it's also important to note that as a school board, we cannot say that you can't live with other family members in, in your household. Your house is your domain, that is your ability to live in it. And I think that's an important thing to note. The other thing that we are going to be doing is that we are going to revise Policy 511 because we are not going to allow F-1 visa students to be admitted into the school district. We just felt that because our school district is growing so much, to have extra students who are here on visas would not be in our best interest. And finally, we did, there's one policy for rescission, bylaw 0135, and that is only because it is a duplicate of a policy that we passed last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lang.
You're welcome.
So at this time, we will go to the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the agenda, which does not include the referendum. This is just the agenda, there's no referendum on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We will adhere to our four-minute timeline, and when the timer goes off, so is your, your time.
Prakash Parab, 33 Genoa Drive. I was in Trenton last year for the meeting, and there was an assemblyman from Camden or Jersey City. They said that when the student comes, parents come to enroll, the child don't ask whether they are citizens, non-citizens, what is their immigration status at all. So please think over, when you are saying that F-1 visa, student visa, the children, I don't know what you're talking about. Before you put it into that policy, be careful, we have a lot of immigrants in our Monroe Township. So we cannot say no to a child coming in, okay? So this is not, I'm just requesting, look, because there's already a New Jersey law there, and if you all are overriding the New Jersey law, it will not be good, okay? So another one thing, the discussion on the impact fees came. Affordable housing today, the main problem is we don't have a legislation and the bill. I have been studying affordable housing a lot. And what has happened is the affordable housing law being filed as suits. So the courts said the verdict in favor of the builders. So now what we are doing is we are meeting the legislatures. Indivisible Group of Highland Park is very active, I have joined with them, I'm a part of the Indivisible Group. So working with the legislature so that there is a bill which defines very well the need of the affordable housing region-wise or what. We are not talking about how the bill should be. And I was told that League of Municipalities is drafting a bill to talk to them. So we are doing that. So please, you all also have a advocacy group, so please do that. That is very important because builders are building high-density houses, and that is impacting the schools. If it will not serve the purpose of Monroe, it will serve the purpose of other districts. We'll do that. We are planning to build 4,000 houses because we have to build, support 850 houses affordable. And I tell you, there are a lot of people waiting for their houses, you know, and this, it will take 10 years for this to happen, that is not good. It is not serving the people also. So we need a bill to do a proper justice to the people. So I request to board to consider, and I also thank the board for passing the resolution. Last time I kept, came and requested that our council has passed a resolution, it would look very nice, the board also passed a resolution, so I'm very thankful, okay? So I'll be coming and meeting you all with our group and talking about how we can have win-win situation. We'll do brainstorming, so be working with the Board of Education, we'll be going to the council, meeting the legislatures too. So we learn from each other and we win the battle, okay? Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. While it is very well-deserved, I am very sad to see Item A, Under Personnel, the retirement of Jackie Winters. Jackie has been a teacher here in Monroe Township for over 35 years, and she has been a huge supporter of our school district. She has made an impact on hundreds and hundreds of children throughout those years. I had the great pleasure of working with Jackie while I was the president of the Barclaybrook Brookside PTA. And Jackie is going to be absolutely missed, and her work at Monroe should definitely be recognized and remembered for a long time. It's with Jackie's dedication and hard work and really getting out there that this building even stands here today. She was very instrumental in getting the referendum passed for the high school, and she worked tirelessly for this past referendum. So I just want to thank Jackie for all her years of service here in Monroe. She's going to be greatly missed, and I hope she has a wonderful retirement.
Joanne Cardone, 11 Gravel Hill Spotswood Year for Almost 50 Years. I've been in this township quite a long time, I've seen a lot of changes, some good, some bad. But I'm still here, and I'm still very much an advocate of education. I have 43 years of teaching under my belt, and for the last nine years since my retirement, I've been subbing in the high school, and I thank you for my pay raise. My sincerest thanks to Rob Goodall and the administrative team for putting on over 30 presentations to get that referendum passed. I know I'm not supposed to be talking about that, but I had to thank him and the administrative team. I also agree with Michelle Arminio as far as being more involved with the zoning board and the planning board as far as construction in the town. Years ago, they changed a lot of the zoning variances, which allowed bigger homes to be built. And I think a lot of the problems have been a lack of communication between the Board of Ed and the zoning and planning boards. So we definitely need to have more communication between the two groups, or three groups, however you want to refer to it. Mr. Polari had mentioned some non-college-bound students' education, and that's another thing that I have been asking for, for many years, being a special ed teacher with a majority of our students, especially the low cog students not going on to college. How are we preparing them for the real world? Many years ago, we had Mr. Mealy teaching some wonderful construction classes. And I don't understand why we can't bring some of this in. I think it's about time we realize that everyone is not going to college. Look how many college graduates are out there unable to get jobs in their degree programs. In 15, 20 years, we're probably not going to be able to find a plumber or a good electrician. I'm not saying that we put vocational programs like that into the building, but we do need to prepare these kids for other types of work besides college. So I would ask that the board at least try to bring something in. If Old Bridge can bring cosmetology into their school system, which they have had for decades, and there are other vocational courses that they've had, somehow we have to find the way. Even if it means, now I'm an advocate of AP courses, trust me, and DECA, of course, so we don't want to eliminate extracurricular. But there should be some way that we can bring something in. Our shop teachers are probably certified to teach these programs, so every little bit will help. I guess that's it, because Kathy, you took care of a lot of the things that I was going to mention in your opening presentation. So, thank you.
I guess that's good, thank you.
How do you do, folks? Richard Gibbons, 415 Schoolhouse Road. I've been here so long tonight, I almost forgot why I came. But I come bearing gifts, and by the way, I just wish, like to wish you all happy belated St. Patrick's Day, all the board members, and you too, Mr. Gorski. I have some gifts tonight for you, but before I give them out...
Does this have to do with the agenda?
Yes, yes, it is. My comments will be on, on the committee reports curriculum, if that's okay or not?
If it's on the agenda.
Okay, okay. I'm going to read you some notes I wrote down. And I see survey after survey showing that too many of our students nationwide are embracing socialism over capitalism. Our country didn't become the greatest country in the world by accident. The founders came up with a formula that advanced the world more in the last 200 years than the rest of the world did in the last 5,000 years. I'm really afraid that we may lose this formula if we don't start passing it on to our students. I have a gift for all the board members tonight. It's a book called The 5,000 Year Leap. Now you people are all educated individuals with direct influence over our students. I just hope that you'll check out this book and hopefully incorporate some of these ideas into the curriculum. But before I hand out the books, I would just like to read you a comment on the back of one of the books. It's a quote. It's from a high school principal. It says, "As a high school teacher of American government, I am thrilled to observe the reaction of students when exposed to these founding principles. They have a much better understanding of the political world they are being thrust into. They can make decisions about real-life situations based on correct principles and are much better prepared to enter college and blink, and bring political truth to college classrooms." better prepared to enter college and bring political truth to college classrooms. Many of my graduated students have returned to thank me for teaching them the foundational principles contained in this book. Perhaps this book's motto should be, 'Don't leave high school without it.'" And this was a quote from Earl Taylor Jr., a high school principal teacher in Mesa, Arizona. So with that in mind, I would just like to hand out these books, if you don't mind.
We'll give them to Mr. Gorski, and Mr. Gorski will, as the board secretary, will be glad to do that.
Okay.
Madam President, looking at the clock at 10:10, I thought actually Mr. Gibbons got us something to eat.
Do you need a, do we need a...
I think we need about a 10-minute break.
Okay. Somebody makes a motion?
I make a motion.
Thanks for the gift, Rich.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we will take a 10-minute recess, back into public session, and we will go to the superintendent's report. Mr. Goodall?
Thank you. Each month, we've been updating the school community on our efforts to communicate with and be more inclusive of our student with special needs and their families in their neighborhood schools and across the district. At our last CPAG meeting, members of the district administrative team presented a year-long action plan in response to discussions with parents related to short and long-term reading interventions and programs K through 12, activities and practices aimed at complete inclusion of students, and professional development for staff in the area of restraint training and autism awareness. Thank you to Dr. Kelly Rozell, Dr. Kevin Higgins, Ms. Monica Hines, and Ms. Marietta Ruella for their contribution to a great meeting. I also wanted to thank all of the additional administrators, CST members, and teachers for attending as well. We are really sending a positive message to parents of a re-energizing of our school community for special education students and their families. I had a great day celebrating Pi Day with the staff and students at the Woodland Elementary School. For those of you unfamiliar with Pi Day, Pi Day is celebrated on March 14th, 3/14, around the world, and is the symbol used in mathematics to represent a constant, the ratio of the circumference of a circle to its diameter, which is 3-point, approximately 3.14. However, at the Woodland Elementary School, they celebrate by, under the guise of inviting Mr. Goodall for a slice of pie, to hit Mr. Goodall with pies. So, not once, but twice, Mr. Goodall was hit by a pie with a student. Anything to promote mathematics in the district. And he's still here. I want to thank Dr. Lehman for inviting me to celebrate with the students at Woodland. It was a great activity, and the kids really enjoyed. And Mr. Lehman also got a pie to the face too, as well. So he was a good sport, Dr. Lehman, I'm sorry. He was a good sport, but it was a great event. After countless hours of preparation and promotion, we unfortunately did not pass our referendum projects. I want to thank our administrative team, Mr. Gorski, Dr. Avic, Mr. Teague, the Board of Education for their constant support during our presentations, the building principals, district content supervisors, all of the parent organizations who rally behind our efforts. Especially want to thank MTEA, Jackie Winters and Beth Ann Augsback, and all of the residents they organized to help to promote the referendum. It was a very disappointing evening, though I respect the outcome and decision of the voters. The need for the additional facility does not change. I look forward to working with everyone on a solution to this issue. Failure and delay will compound this problem over time. The progress of our district will eventually be challenged. A number of years ago, as, you know, being hired as a new principal of the high school, I was challenged with increasing student achievement and making us competitive with our neighboring districts, South Brunswick, East Brunswick, West Windsor. And we accomplished that once we got rid of the trailers. My fear is, by continual delay and failure, we will regress as a school district. So I'm looking really forward to, however the board wishes to proceed, be an active part and participant in making sure that our school district is at its very best. So we need a solution here. On a better note, but regrettably, I wanted also to congratulate Ms. Jackie Winters at the Barclaybrook School, Ms. Karen Earl from the middle school, Ms. Jan Jernigan from the high school, Anna Kabeninski, a middle lay custodian, who submitted their retirement papers effective July 1st. In addition, I missed an opportunity last month where Sharon Aptaker from the high school and Faith Vittelen from Oak Tree and Apple Garth also submitted their retirements. It's a tremendous loss to the school district, and we wish them the very best in their next steps. And I know they'll finish up strong. Mrs. Aptaker was at the CPAG meeting the other night advocating for kids, and Ms. Winters, her advocacy of the school referendum, she worked tirelessly. But it's going to be a real loss to the district when we have to replace those individuals. So I wish them well. So with that, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that Personnel Action Items A through AL under the superintendent report be approved by consent roll call.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, comments or questions for Mr. Goodall? Mr. Ryback?
I just want to make a comment about the retirees. Certainly, I wish all of them best of luck. And just to note that, you know, I've been able to work with Jackie Winters for the past few years and very closely on the steering committee, and she absolutely is an asset to that committee and an asset to this whole district. We're going to really miss her. But I have a feeling she's going to be involved, and I hope so.
Thank you. Mr. Chiarella?
Same, same, ditto. I'm going to say ditto. But yeah, Jackie Winters has been an asset. I served on Kids First under her, under her leadership. And she taught me a lot about, you know, just about public service, and a lot about fighting for what you believe in, and how to, and just doing the right thing. And I'm going to miss her personally. I think she's been, I think she's been a huge asset to our district. And I also, I consider Jackie a friend. I also see that Ms. Earl is retiring, and she's also a friend of mine. So I wish everyone well on here, but those two people are friends, and I hate to see them retire, although I'm happy for them. And I'll never retire.
You can't retire.
And Jackie Winters has had most of my children, but the children that she has had is still probably double anybody else's children here. That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam President, I have, I want to say something about Jackie Winters, too. I've known her since the day I moved here. On a personal note, one of my favorite things that Jackie Winters has done is square dancing. Second grade square dancing, we can't forget that. There is no one else that does that. But she has been a great leader in that school. I've worked with her many years as a PTA president at Barclaybrook and Brookside, and she truly will be missed. So I wish her the best of luck and all the other retirees.
Somehow, I think if we keep saying all these things, she'll come back, and she won't retire. Mrs. Lang?
On that list, there, it's sad when anybody retires, but I just have to say something about Sharon Aptaker as a case manager and an LDTC here in the high school. She is so giving and so dedicated to her students, and everything that she did to make sure that our special needs students were getting what they actually required is beyond. And Sharon has been a blessing to my family, as has Faith Vittelen been when she did speech therapy. I think four of my kids can, I might win. No. And, you know, our relationship with Jackie Winters and Karen Earl is, you know, that will always be very special. And my daughter still thinks of Hello, Dolly every time we mention Jackie Winters' name because she used to sing Hello, Dolly every time my daughter got off the school bus. So I wish the best of luck to all of our retirees. We will miss you greatly.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll have a roll call. Superintendent's report, personnel items.
Madam, if I may, before I take the roll call, I also would like to chime in on the congratulations to Jackie Winters. Working with her and the MTEA leadership over the years, I've appreciated her fairness and her support for the schools and the programs. And we're always able to meet in the middle, even on some complex issues having to do with the gray areas of contract interpretation. And I'll certainly miss her from a business administration standpoint.
And we did spend, and even with Mr. Chiarella, we spent a lot of time in negotiations with Jackie Winters.
Lot of nights.
Yes, a lot of nights. Yes, she will be, she will be missed, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rutzke?
I just feel sad I don't know Jackie Winters. Oh, you want me to vote? Yes, yes. I feel like I obviously missed someone.
You did. She's great.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Pelori?
I will miss Jackie Winters, too, and I won't, yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through AL has passed.
Thank you.
Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through S be approved by consent roll call.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, again, comments or questions for Mr. Goodall? Ms. Arminio?
Yes, sorry. Bylaw 0152, it talks about not requiring, on the second paragraph, any member may place a member's name in nomination. That is for when we do our, when we vote for our officers, our board officers. And previously, there was no need for a second on a nomination. And I think that's purposeful because that gives the minority an ability to nominate someone that doesn't require a second. So I think that putting, and it's acknowledged here, it says, "Though not required, a second is encouraged and permissible." And I think that is not good for the board. It should, it should be that any name could be nominated and then should be voted on. But to require, it doesn't require a second, but it will be likely that a second will always be asked for. And then again, I think that's a disadvantage to the minority on the board, and I think that is not good for the way we should conduct business. So I would be voting no on that. Again, I ask my colleagues to consider that on number 0164 on the agenda. It talks about, the last paragraph, or the second to the last paragraph, talks about copies of the agendas shall be distributed to the board prior to the meeting when possible, and shall be made available for distribution to interested parties at the meeting, and posted on district websites. I would ask that that, that "when possible" language be removed. I think it's essential that members of the board certainly should have the agenda prior to the meetings, and the agenda should be available to the public before a meeting. And the, above that, and it talks, excuse me, and it talks about, the person, the person presiding shall commence each meeting with an announcement of notice given for the meeting or a statement regarding the lack of adequate notice in accordance with the law. I would ask that we insert the Open Public Meetings Act and any other pertinent law because this, as well as this language is for the board members, it is also for the public. And I think if we let the public know what act and what law we are referring to, they would have the opportunity to educate themselves and know what is going on. So, Mr. Goodall, if you can explain why you're recommending these changes, I would appreciate it. And then I have two more.
They came all on recommendation from the board attorney and discussion at Policy Committee.
So do you think that my suggestions for change are, would you consider asking? I mean, none of these, I just think that it goes again to transparency, and it helps the public understand what's going on. So would you consider and maybe ask the committee to reevaluate that language and perhaps reconsider it? Would you be willing to do that?
At this point, I don't believe the policy chair, and myself think it's appropriate to do that, so...
Well, it's a first reading, so that's when it would...
Well, we can accept the first reading, and then if you would like to submit some changes...
And I could discuss it with the policy chair.
Well, I have just submitted my request to Mr. Goodall, so I would hope that that would be taken into consideration. Let me move forward on that, since it's still on the first reading. Policy number 7440, it talks about, the last sentence, when it talks about special risks... Let me find that. I'm hoping, what determines a special risk? Again, I think that's sort of a nebulous statement, and I would hope that we would have a little bit more defined understanding of what that means. It's page 2 of 2 on school district security. So that would be another thing I would ask to...
Ms. Arminio, with all due respect, there is a policy committee meeting, and there is a meeting before the policy with the board attorney. And if you, these are recommended?
Right.
If you don't like them, just vote no on them.
But we're not going to go through every policy. Well, no, no, no. I would like the public to be aware of what the reason for my voting no is. And I will be voting no, yes, thank you very much. But I think the public should know why I vote no. Not, I'm not a contrarian. I think I have very good reasons, and mostly because I'm hoping to protect the public's interest. So thank you for that, but I think the public has a right to know why I'm voting no.
Anyone else? Then we'll have a roll call.
Board Action Items A through S on Superintendent's Report. Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Okay. Yes, except for, in I, bylaw 0152, bylaw 064, policy and regulation 7440, those are no's, those three are no. Policy on the second reading, policy 1110, the organizational chart. And, that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Pelori?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through S has passed.
Okay, so we are on to the...
And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Are we at the Business Administrator's Report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through N, as in Nancy, be approved by consent roll call.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Ms. DeMayo, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gorski? None?
Mr. Pelori?
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Recuse on E, and yes on everything else.
So noted, thank you. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes, I have to recuse on E with my name.
So noted. Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolponowicz?
I, yes to everything, will recuse on letter E for myself.
So noted, thank you. Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through N has passed, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, we will go to the Board President's Report, and this is on regard to the superintendent search, because we said that we would keep the public informed about the process of the superintendent's search. And at the last board meeting, there was a question about having the board attorney working with the Board of Education during the superintendent's search because of the confidentiality of the process. And because the board attorney works for the Board of Education, it is appropriate for the board to work with her on the superintendent's search. So Mr. Ryback and I met with her on February 21st to go over the process and the timeline for conducting the search. And at the February meeting also, the board approved doing an internal search only. So we are currently working on a posting that will be sent out to all the schools on April 2nd. And this date was chosen because... And this date was chosen because we didn't want the search to interfere with the referendum. The posting will be sent out to all the board members within the next day or two for your review before it's being posted. In order to apply for the position, a candidate would have to possess a school administrator certification. Interested candidates would be required to send a letter of interest and a resume in a sealed envelope marked "Application for Superintendent of Schools" and personal and confidential to the board president in care of Mary Smith. All submissions will be available to be reviewed by all of the board members, and it will be kept confidential. Every candidate that applies for the position will be interviewed, and we will be scheduling special board meetings for those interviews. I've asked the board members to contribute or send to my, send to me questions that are, questions for the candidates that are Monroe-centric, and it needs to be just approved by the board attorney, not for content, but for legalities. And we don't have a specific time for appointing the next superintendent, but our goal is to have somebody in place by July 1st. And that concludes my report. It's been a long meeting, I needed to keep it short.
Madam President, would you place all the resumes that you receive on the board docs for the rest of the members?
No. No. They will not be placed on anything electronically. They will be kept sealed in Mary Smith's office. You have the right to go there anytime you wish to review them, and I would hope that anybody from the board takes the time to review them before we do the interviews. But no, they're not going to go on email or anything like that.
Thank you.
So, we are at public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone.
What about other board business?
Oh.
Oh, Jill, I would like to say something.
Okay, I apologize.
Clearly, there's no stop.
I'm just trying to go home. Oh, that's because it's on a different page. No, because I don't have it, that's why. I don't have other board business on my agenda. Other board business, I don't have it. I have 14 and I have 12. Mr. DeMayo?
Okay. Just two quick things. I would like to thank the MTEA for supporting the referendum. I know that they worked hard for our children despite it not being passed, so I want to thank them. I would also like to thank the administration of Monroe Township School District, Mr. Goodall, Mr. Dr. Alvich, Mr. Gorski, and Mr. Tay, who worked tirelessly to educate the public about the referendum. They are an amazing administrative team who deeply care about our children. They have spent many evenings and weekends giving presentation, and I want to thank them for this work. And despite its failure, they have shown how committed they are to our children and providing them the best education they can. So, thank you to them and the MTEA.
Any other board business?
Madam President?
Oh, go ahead, you go first.
Mrs. Siegel?
Sorry. First, I want to thank the Oak Tree Applegarth PTA for inviting us to come read books to the students during Read Across America Week. I have to say, that was a lot of fun. I went through, I brought a big bag of books, and I went through every single one of them. So, I did really enjoy it. I'm willing to read anytime, so I'll put that out there to the principals. The next thing I want to update on, Patty and I attended a school board-sponsored finance conference back in February. We participated in a general session which featured an update from the State House. We were shown a historical background video on how the school funding formula came about. It took us through a chronological timeline dating back to the late 1800s to our current state. A presentation also was done on the state funding formula and what components make up that formula. In addition, they took us through how they calculate and derive the per pupil cost. So, it was a very well-done presentation, very informative. And a couple of other sessions we attended on success, how to run a successful school project, such as building schools, capital projects, and what to do when your projects are running into trouble in regards to schedule, scope, and cost. They went through pros and cons of the low bidder, which by state laws, schools have to go with the low bidder for projects. And our last session focused on the hard times in education with the 2% levy tax cap in effect, school districts that lose state aids while others benefit, and how to manage increasing costs and negotiation. So, it was very informative. I would highly recommend if it does come up again for other board members to go because it did have a lot of good information.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Lang?
Okay, so I have three things, and I'll make it quick. On March 9th, I attended the Monroe Mindful Mentor Program's presentation at the Rec Center. Monroe Mindful Mentors are part of the India-US Forum of Monroe Township, and this was their Women's History Month presentation. And the neatest thing is, if you guys remember back to a couple months ago, Vishna Patel is a student at the high school, she's in 10th grade. She presented, she actually manages Monroe, the Mindful Mentors Program, where they team up high school kids with kids from the middle school and down to the elementary school, and they work together on different projects. And this month, it was their focus on women's history. And I actually, I walked out of there learning more about other, you know, the great things that women are doing, and just felt very empowered. And I think it's impressive that we have students that can mentor each other, that can work together, and they're building that relationship. And I think Vishna Patel is a person that someday we're going to see doing great big things. You did that on purpose. No. Great big things in this world. But this is what I've been so excited about, I think we almost came to blows over who'd get to tell about this next thing. Our, Mrs. Dillon, Kathy Dillon, in our school, runs the Unified Sports Programs, and she has been a powerhouse of really bringing our special education students together with our typical, what we call typical students, and working together through sports. So, it's an inclusive environment. And we are thrilled that because of her hard work and the dedication, New Jersey Special Olympics has invited our unified soccer team to represent New Jersey in a major league soccer program called the Major League Soccer Unified Exchange Program. Our unified soccer team will be, this is so cool. Like, this is, you've got, just think about this, right? These are our kids with disabilities, and some of them are more involved than others, but they're going to sign contracts, like, they're going to sign a contract to play for the Red Bulls. Like, this is like, for me, they're going to get Red Bull uniforms. They are also, Special Olympics is flying these students to Kansas City to play a professional soccer game in Kansas City on April 14th. Special Olympics is paying for everything, it's all expenses paid.
Red Bulls are paying for everything, Patty.
Oh, Red Bulls are paying, sorry, Red Bulls are paying for everything. And then I think it's April 30th, they are going to be playing at the Red Bulls Arena in Newark, and it's going to be televised by ESPN. So, maybe, like, we can go and see them, but our kids are going to have, you know, what an opportunity to be able to do this. And I'm just thrilled that we have had a board of education that supports Kathy Dillon and her work and that our kids, that's an incredible opportunity. So, that's really good news.
Field trip, I call field trip.
I think so. I think we should all go.
And somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that the board of education attends the Red Bulls, but, okay.
Mr. Gorski's dying.
And finally, I just needed to add to what Mr. Goodall said about the CPAG. We have Betty Sabarito, who would hate me saying her name, has been so wonderful working with Mr. Goodall and with Monica Hines to get the CPAG going and going forward. I know at the end of our last meeting, we had parents walking out saying that this is an effective group because something was brought to the attention of the administration. And Dr. Alvik, Mr. Goodall, Dr. Rozell, Mr. Higgins, and Monica and Marietta jumped right on it to solve this problem. And I think as a parent of a special needs child, I can share with you that it doesn't often move very fast, and sometimes you feel like nobody's hearing you. So, I think that the idea that the CPAG is really going and that people are responding, I think that's great. The next meeting is actually April 6th, and we're having, there, an author. His name is Carrie Magrow. April 10th, I said the wrong date again. Carrie Magrow, he is a young man with autism and on the spectrum. He's also an author and an advocate, and he's going to be presenting. And then later in April, Mrs. Sabarito is trying to bring just the parents together of the CPAG so that they can talk about how they're going to organize their group a little bit better to kind of take the reins a little bit more. So, I just want to congratulate everybody who's been helping with the CPAG because it's really good stuff. And that's it.
Mr. Ryback?
First, I'd like to thank the Barclay Brookside PTA for the donation of $10,000 to replace a marquee sign at Brookside School. That's really very generous. I know it must have been a lot of hard work. Also, I had prepared a statement, but most of it has been said already. I just want to touch base with how important it is to replace the school aid formula. I came across an article in NJ Spotlight called "Spelling Out: How School Funding Formula Needs to Be Overhauled," they're really saying it needs to be replaced. And just briefly, you know, the current formula is designed to meet outcome standards that are over a decade old and based on conditions and costs from that period. It's time for that formula to go and be replaced, and I urge our state officials to start working on a new one now and start putting it off.
Mr. Pelori?
Not to extend the meeting any further, but I would be remiss if I did not thank the district administration for a wonderful job you guys did, and also the rest of the colleagues on the Board of Education. I don't think there's anything for us to be shameful that the referendum failed. I really appreciate all your work, and each and every one of us felt extremely passionate about winning, about getting the referendum through. And we will dust off, get up, and move again. And I also want to thank everybody in the public who supported it for the right reasons. One item that I do want to bring up is, a couple of days ago, in the NJ.com newspaper, there was an article about the grading of public schools. Although some of these gradings have, you know, it doesn't give you the full story, they are based on several different things. Our high school was scored at 65.08. Woodland School scored at 56.18. Brookside scored at 56.33. And Applegarth at 67.84. The point is that they're in the mid-50s to mid-60s. However, our middle school scored 35.7. When I compared that to some of the Jersey City and Newark middle schools, it's actually below some of those as well. I would be really curious to see why our middle school rated scored so low compared to other school systems. Again, I'm not making a point about the referendum or anything. I know that there is an issue at middle school in terms of overcrowding. Is it directly related to the score, or are there other issues? I request Mr. Goodall to look into it and get back to us.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. I just wanted to touch on what Dr. Alvik was saying earlier with the Avid program being piloted next year at Woodland. I think that is an excellent idea. I do have my middle schooler enrolled in the Avid program right now, and it's, I see a complete difference in her experience in middle school versus my son. And I think that the district should look toward extending the Avid program. I'd much rather see as a parent, the Avid program become our standard. Avid is not about extra help, it's about pushing kids and giving them the tools for them to be successful. So, teaching organization, showing them how to create study guides, showing, giving them the resources for them to make the most out of their education. I didn't know much about Avid when my son was in middle school, so he didn't take advantage of that, but I learned a lot from it based on what other, I knew other students were in it. So, I'd like to see the district possibly, instead of having an application process where you have to be interviewed and go through a rigorous process to get into this program, I think that should be the basis of what we're teaching our students across the district. Every student should be shown how to create a study guide, how to make the most of their education. It shouldn't be, you know, you interview and you get into this program. It should, that should be what we are striving for, making every student have the ability to succeed, not just a certain group. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for that. One, a couple of things that we are doing to expand the strategies that Avid provides students. So, I know that Avid is a very specific program, so it does require the application process, it does require the electives at the middle and the high school. But a couple of things that we've done is, we've incorporated Avid strategies into every one of our professional development courses that we offer. So, every one of our trainers in the district has been trained in Avid strategies to try and make sure that more teachers learn about the Avid strategy so that they can incorporate them into their classrooms. The middle school does a lot of professional development after school with the Wicker Program. I know Mrs. Chanley, Mr. Higgins, Mr. Higgins is the site coordinator for Avid at the middle school. They have teachers who have been to the Summer Institute for Avid that have learned the strategies, turnkey them to the staff at the middle school. So, they have done a lot of that to try and do exactly what you're saying, get the strategies into more teachers' hands so that we can get it into more students' hands. At the elementary level, it's not a, an interview process. At the elementary level, it is teaching all the teachers the strategies so that students learn those strategies from early on.
Sure. And I'm, as a parent of a middle school and high schooler, I would like to see us move in that direction where everybody has that because it absolutely, I see it in my own children. It makes a huge difference to the way the students learn and what they can achieve. And it is a wonderful program. It just, I would hate for it to be a program, I would like to see it as the curriculum here in Monroe. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum and go to the closed session resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJ SA 10 colon 4 dash 3 through 10 colon 4 dash 21, to discuss the following subject: harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Mrs. DeMayo, Mrs. Lang, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time, we'll move into closed session. Okay, seeing no one in the public, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting, and there is a change, will be on Tuesday, April 30th, 7 o'clock PM at the Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Chiarella, Mr. DeMayo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the meeting is adjourned.